Good. Okay, okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll stand for the singing of "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot's love in all thy sons common. With glowing hearts we see thee light, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Record of attendance, Linda, you're good. Declarations of conflict of interest. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? And I have 12A, 2017 curling. And that's not a decision, I understand? That's just information? Sorry, go ahead. That's all right? Yes. CAO?
Thank you, worship. I'd like to add an in-camera item dealing with property acquisition. So if we could add that under the in-camera session. We have property there, so we do have an item tonight. And just to clarify, the item concerning the curling, that is an addition, that is, all we're requesting there is council's direction, whether you want to meet at a later date to consider that.
Good, thank you. Motion to approve the agenda. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minute? Town Council, November 13, 2014. Motion to approve, so moved? Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, November 27, 9:00 a.m. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, November 27, 1:00 p.m. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, December 2, 2014. Moved and seconded? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Presentation. Harold Richardson, EMO. Welcome, Harold. Okay, we'll just make sure the microphone's on. And did you need?
Need your motion sheet, Harold?
Huh? Yeah. I'm like you.
Welcome, Harold.
Thank you.
So we usually aim for about 10 minutes. I don't know if you, okay?
That's all, that's all I need. Do you have any questions? That's fine. I, I understand that the question that you asked me to answer tonight was what is an emergency? And I passed out, I think, a document, thanks to Linda, that sort of gives you a rundown on the major things that would be emergencies to us and the categories in which they fall. Now, as far as EMO goes, when it comes to fires, EHS, stuff like that, we would only get involved with them when whatever the situation is surpasses their abilities to perform effectively. In other words, they need more help and more, more equipment or something like that. In natural causes, we usually are the ones that start it out because they don't have the information and we have to make some decisions in EMO because our job is to protect property and, and life. Okay, or I should say it the other way because I'm always preaching, life comes first. Fix it up and then conserve the property. But, so we would get involved very early in the game on, on a situation like that. We've been going at it now for the last two days. We lucked out down here, I didn't have much to do, but we've been sort of watching the situation. And, and any kind of a, a natural disaster, we would start out first and do whatever is required. Our main job, or the thing, there's two ways we can do it, with or without a state of local emergency. Now, when we perform, ask for a local state of emergency, we're asking for that because it gives us extra powers. For instance, one of them is moving people. People do not like to move from their homes. There is no ifs, ands, or buts about that. Anybody that knows what went on with the dam failure a couple of years ago, I guess it's three now, we had a devilish time. There's case law that says a man's homes is castle. So even though we can say it's a mandatory evacuation, we have to be very persuasive to try to get them out of there. We do not have at our disposal enough police and stuff like that that we're going to start carrying bodies out anyway. And you may have heard some stuff on the news today where people have been talked to about areas where they want to flood. Lunenburg County's having a lot of problems right now. And people have decided they want to stay home. So what we did before and what we would do again is we'd just get them to sign a sheet of paper that says they understand, they've been told, and they understand that the emergency service people will not be in to give them any help during the emergency until afterwards. That we're not going to put emergency responders' lives at risk for somebody that doesn't want to move first. Storm surges is another example. Every so often, we get the threat of a storm surge. Where we sit geographically, we're pretty lucky. It's pretty hard to get a storm surge in here. But if there was one, and the concern that we have isn't the town, in this case, it's more the municipality, but as a joint effort for me, would be like, for instance, if we were going to get one in and come in on the Lighthouse area like it did a few years, a couple of years ago, yes, we would go down and start early. I think we called everybody into the office at 5:00 in the morning to get ready to get busing and stuff prepared to move the people out of there ahead of the storm. Because once John's Cove gets flooded, we're not going in to get them anyway. We have no way to get there, so that's part of the problem.
Just a quick question for my colleagues around the table and the listening audience. When you said we will call the people in, Harold, who would those people be?
That's our planning committee and the people that are going to man the EMO office. Like community services, fire, police, EHS, public works.
We have a card, I'm a member of the EMO. We have a card, that system's still in effect, is it, isn't it?
No.
No, that's gone. I missed that meeting.
Well, it's, it's, it's still a good system. We may have to use it, so it all goes to the card app. What he's talking about is a card that said, if we call you, you call these agencies and tell them to go to the EOC.
So anyway, you, you have, you have a bunch of people already, all ready to go, that they, they know their job and, and they go when there's an emergency call?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
At least we hope they're going to get there. You've got to remember, and this is an important point, I think, the whole EMO organization is volunteer. And so I've never had any problem getting them in when we needed them, but it's a volunteer organization. Yes, they all have jobs. And in some cases, they may not be able to leave their job. So we ask them to get a filling to send in that is knowledgeable. So, and that's the way we staff it. The CAOs are in charge of the office when we declare an emergency. And I'm there as their helper. And then it goes down from there to the other organizations that do their job and keep us informed in what's going on. We usually call for situation reports every half hour to an hour, depending on what the situation is, how bad it is. And we all sit around a table and each organization tells us what kind of straits they're in, how well they're working, and all that kind of stuff that we need to know. So that's sort of a nutshell of what we do in emergency management. The office, you can get ahold, and if you have any questions, anybody has any questions or concerns, 902-742-8558, it's in the phone book, call me. That phone gets answered 24/7. And I've been walking down the street in Cincinnati and had it ring, so I know it gets answered 24/7, so.
Go ahead, counselor.
I'm just trying, the, the phone system that we have, what's, what's, would you give us a little bit of insight in that, Harold? It's an opportunity to ask the public out there to, to put their, their phone numbers and what, so they could be put on the, on the call list.
City Watch.
We have a program called City Watch, which we just purchased two years ago. And that system, we can get ahold of people by phone, by email, or by text. And we would prefer the email and the text because it goes out no matter what's happening. The phones are slow. We only have, we only purchased eight trunks or eight phone lines. And so when you figure it out, just do the math, you'll see how slow that can be to get ahold of people. But we can give them instructions on where to go if we have to evacuate. We can give them instructions on what's going to happen next, all, all that kind of stuff that pertains to getting them prepared for that emergency we can do over that system. It's just been upgraded again, so we're, we like it. And all you've got to do is go on, do you guys have it on your website? I didn't notice.
You can, you can tell us how because there was a glitch in the system the last time?
Yeah.
So we want people that, that called in or sent their information in, if they're listening this evening, we want them to send their information again.
You can go to the town website, the municipal website, or the EMO website. And that will, there'll be a link there to, to the City Watch program. And you click on that link to sign up. Now, you have to have a password, unfortunately. If you're like me, you're sick of passwords. You have to have a password and a username and password. That's your own, you do that yourself and put them in there, and they're yours, so that nobody else, and that's a protection, so nobody else can go in and look at your information or fool with it in the system. The only people that can see it is myself and, and as I move it around and the person that put it in.
That's all confidential, isn't it?
It's all confidential. We don't let any of that information out. It's a computerized system and it works extremely well. And there's places for your name, address, and addresses are important to us because you take, like, the storm we had with the dams a couple of years ago, only people we wanted to get moved were the people along Lake Vaughan and in that area, so we can target just those people. We don't have to wake up everybody for no reason at all. We started that one at 1:00 in the morning. We didn't have City Watch then. We sat in the office with phone books and telephones calling people. But with the City Watch program, we can do it. So there's places there for your name, your address, your community, for those that live outside of town, and two telephone numbers, two email numbers or addresses, and a text address. And the who's supplier, so the different suppliers, we have to have the texting set up differently. So we have to know who your supplier is for your cellphone service. And we really, really, we've got a list now, and we've had, had lists, and I get phone lists, but I really, really like to see everybody go in, sign up, and give us your email addresses and your, your texting information, your cell text. Because that is the quickest way. I sit next to my phone and I do a test and the phone's ringing before I'm basically finished with a text message. So that's really important to us. We can get phone numbers. We can't get everybody's phone number because we can't go at those that aren't, not in the phone book. If you're not in the phone book, we don't have your number. And if you have, and you're, like a lot of people today are starting to live just off cell phones, get that cellphone number in there so that we can get you because there is not a directory for cell phones.
That sounds like a CJLS and Vanguard, get the, get the story out kind of situation.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Counselor Dennis?
I just have a question on when, when we had the storm Arthur, a lot of people had no power and they were off for like a week. So the question was, is there a place that people, like, when something like that happens, do we have a place that people can go? Because they had, they, some people had children, they had no food, they had no showers or anything. So do we have a place set up that they know they can go to for help?
Yeah, we don't publicize where it is. We'll tell you in the emergency where to go because we have different places that serve different times, you know, for us. So, and, so, yeah, we do. We have several places we can send people if we need to. And Arthur was warm weather. There was really no problem except power outages. And the town was completely back in by 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon on that storm day.
There were some people for a week in town that had no power.
Yeah, there was a few. Those are isolated cases. And if they got in touch with us, we would, in fact, one of them, I visited daily, trying to help them out, but.
Well, I had numerous calls from people who had no food. We got them food. There was another person who got ahold of us. They had an elderly person that was living in her apartment with no heater, oh, well, didn't need heat, but lights or anything. So like, people were, some people were just scared and not knowing, having a place to go, so. So when this, if this ever happens again, so how would they, what would they do so that they would know where to go? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Langill?
Thank you, worship. City, this City Watch, where exactly on our website is it? I've been playing here and I can't seem to find it.
I've heard that it's hard to find on the.
Yeah, I'm like, I've gone through, I'm on home, so I played with home and I don't see it there.
CAO can answer that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, if you go to the town of Yarmouth website and you go under Town Services?
Town Services.
Okay, three columns of services show up. On the top right-hand side, it says Emergency Management.
Yeah, I clicked that. I thought it might be there, so I'm clicking that. And there's a nice thing on Emergency Management Office.
Right, and you go down, it says links to Yarmouth Emergency Management Office.
Yes.
Click that link.
Click that link.
Now, now you're on Harold's website.
Okay.
And you see at the top, in the middle, it says City Watch.
Okay, so it's not really an easy find, is it? Can we make it easier? Because I wouldn't, I mean, I.
Well, in the middle of an emergency, what we'll do is we'll post on Facebook and a message on our website. It'll be prominent then, but in a non-emergency situation, everyone wants their information front and center on our website. So, so the, I think the key is, is when there's an emergency happening is to communicate as far ahead as we, as we can, so we know a storm is coming. Post messages on our, on our Facebook page, on our website, through Twitter. Let people know that there's something happening and to sign up for City Watch if they haven't, but also to follow EMO's Facebook page for, for official information as it's available. Everyone, everyone will be speculating and concerned and sharing information, some of it accurate, some of it not. That's our experience. And so as much as we can direct people to EMO, the more we can do that, the better. And I know Harold has a volunteer communications person who, you know, who will respond with the correct information that Harold and myself and the team will, will approve or confirm before it goes out.
Just wanted to add, Harold, you know, it's, I think it's very noticed, I noticed that you, you stressed, and I think it's very important that all of you guys with EMO are volunteers. And I think that's crudos to your group for that. I know during an emergency, you get a lot of pressure and you get a lot of irate calls and you take a lot of hassles and it's probably something that 90% of the population wouldn't want to do. So I think on, as a counselor, and I think I can safely speak for many of our colleagues around the table, well done and thanks to your committee for stepping up and helping your community the way you're doing. It's really commendable and thank you very much.
Yeah, it takes the heat off you guys. You don't have to get into the local mode where they can just send, tell them to call us and we'll take care of it.
Thank you, your worship. Harold, people that don't have a, a direct line, hard line in, they have portable phones and that, when power goes out, those are no good to you, is that, am I right?
Well, they keep them charged if they just go out to their car, if they have a plug-in for their car.
Not, not, not their, not their cellphone, do they?
Oh, you mean a house phone?
House phones. If, if they're not hard, if, if they're just plugged in and they're not the real, a real, you know, direct line telephone, that doesn't have to be plugged in to be charged. We had problems with that the last time, I think. And you would have problems with that if you were sending out City Watch because if the power was out, they can't, nobody can call in or call out on those phones.
No, that's why we would rather have the emails and text messages because they can get those.
The reason why I'm asking the question is because some people don't, don't realize that if you haven't got a direct line, like, let's just say the, the old-fashioned phone, like I have at home, the power can go out, my phone still works.
Yeah, that's right, same with me.
So that's the problem, would you say?
Yeah, the problem can be solved by just using your cellphone. Okay, and we, and you can keep that charged even if you don't have a power on in your house. You can go out to your car and plug it in and charge it up. And, you know, you should never be with, without that type of a device. If you've got a cellphone, we're going to get to you. One thing I, I do say, and I, I bring this up all the time, with communication side of the house, this community, town in Yarmouth, is extremely lucky. We have an extremely good amateur radio group. And we have several people in that organization. We can, we, there is never going to be a time when we can't get out to the outside world. We've got, they've got so much stuff going on in there that sometimes boggles my mind, but they're good. And they, they make sure communications is working.
So, so the reason I, I think the question, I didn't realize what question we had asked you, but what is an emergency is because what Counselor Dennis was saying, this, through the Arthur storm, an awful lot of people were saying this is an emergency because they have no power for days. And, and I guess I don't agree with the, with the no food and stuff because the stores were open, everything was open and, and running as it was, but there was no power, so food was spoiled and things like that, and medications and the refrigerators were. So, so we discussed this a little bit at, at the EMO meeting on Tuesday night. And we really need to, to, to get out to the public what an emergency is, to, to help them understand. And the, and the other, the other thing is to, to make sure that we use every single avenue of communication, including Twitter and, and your radio people and, and everything else because everybody receives information differently.
Differently, yeah.
And, and, and whose task it is to get the information out there. Because I don't, if I'm being honest, I, I don't know that everybody knows about EMO, to go to the website or the webpage, or, they just don't. So it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we educate the public a whole lot better on where to go and how much they have to be ready in, in the case of, of an emergency or close to an emergency. It's really important that we do, that we do that.
Yeah, we didn't really get into go mode because power was back, gas stations were opened, you know. The station down by me is always open just about because it's on the same grid as the hospital, so they can get. And the food was open. I was to the store at 6:00 in the morning and picked up some food and took the, the office with me in case we got stuck in there and no power around. And then later on in the afternoon, late afternoon, we went and got food for other people, so. The stores were open, the restaurants were open after late afternoon on, so we were in pretty good shape. And so we, we didn't, rightly or wrongly, we didn't see the need to get into full swing.
Counselor Dawes?
Huh? For Yarmouth? Before my time.
Counselor Dawes?
I've been living here for 22 years. It's, it was started before me.
Thank you, your worship. Harold, thank you very much for coming and explaining, explaining this to us. I very much appreciate it because I was the culprit that caused all this in the first place. So I have a question with, you, you have written here on the sheet, visit Be Ready, Be Prepared. That is a website?
No.
Is it www.beprepared?
Yeah, you can go on, you can go on that website, yeah.
That is, that is a website?
Yeah, it's not my website, but it's a website.
What does that website tell us?
And it does do that, the same thing. It will tell you the same stuff that I'm going to tell you, so.
All right. And on that, on your website or on, on this one, Be Ready, Be Prepared, does that also, do both of them have definitions of, of an emergency? Does it explain to people what constitutes an emergency? Because we went through this, we went through this already before. What an emergency, what I would regard as an emergency, you would probably, you would regard as trivial because you have more knowledge, you have more experience in this. But many people don't. To some people, their cellphone battery is, is dead and that's an emergency, their world's come to an end. But a little more information, we, still, still needs to be out there and just how readily available. And I do agree with you, it's, it's like pulling hen's teeth trying to get everyone's information into one, one central pot for you and also for everyone else's safety. We went through that when we both sat on the Climate Change Action Plan Committee. And yes, it, it is a touchy, touchy, touchy topic and it's very difficult to corral.
Yeah, thank you. Now, that's, that's, that's the key. If you want to keep safe, that's the key. Give us the information and we'll get out to you.
Counselor Dennis?
Thank you, your worship. I don't want to be disrespectful to Mayor or Harold.
About it.
But, I'm just going to say this.
But I did say people's food went bad.
People lost food, yes. And it's okay to say restaurants were open and that, but you know what? There's a lot of people in this town that didn't have any money. And so those are the people that we need to take care of as well. So to, to be able to say, yes, I could go to the restaurant and eat, I was okay, of course, I didn't really lose my power. But some people did lose power and they had children, they had no money, and so they needed food. So sometimes we have to see the whole picture.
And if they call me, you know, if they'll call in, and I brought in this phone staff early in the morning.
Right.
I had them there by 8:00 and said, you know, because I don't want to be answering all the phone calls and, because it gets kind of busy sometimes.
Right.
And so I had them in, I left them go at 1:00. We didn't get one phone call.
But I'm thankful for you coming in because now we know who to call. So. So, your lines will probably be busier if we have another storm.
I don't mind it at all.
Thank you.
Counselor Langel?
Thank you. Harold, roughly how many families were affected towards the end that were there for power off in the town, roughly, if you're guessing?
Town?
In the town, if Yarmouth, for the last, because that's only our jurisdiction, our municipality. But roughly, how many families would have gone without power to the point of food spoilage? Any estimate on that?
Not really, except that one, we did put out the call and say, you know, let us know if you still don't have power and give us your address and we'll try to make sure you're on the list. Half a dozen?
What, half a dozen? Has any thought been made to maybe setting up emergency generators that we could loan to families, you know, in case of a power, like, if we're only looking at, say, half a dozen or so, small generators that if you, because I know some of the cases that Counselor Dennis was referring to because, like her, we received the calls, but in fairness, that was trees that fell on their property kind of a thing, it's not. But on the other hand, from a humanitarian help through EMO when the young children, it would seem to me to be useful if we would maybe explore the thought of getting maybe a half a dozen small generating units that could be loaned for short periods of time, just enough to charge the fridges up for a bit because once the fridge is to good point, then it's going to hold for a bit until it goes through. So, that was my first point, which I'd love your comment on, but I had a second point I wanted to make too.
The, they've talked about that, we've talked about that. Actually, we put three in the fire department at one time, I'm not sure if they're still there or not, but they were portable generators. The problem with portable generators is you have to know how to hook them up in houses and that's a serious issue. There's been a lot of people injured putting them up and not knowing what they're doing and not only that, the Power Corp gets kind of upset when all of a sudden they find a power line that's supposed to be dead, it's got power on it because it feeds back through the system if they don't have the thing hooked up right. So, but, and these nursing homes, the senior citizens homes that are around here, I have pride and tried and tried. Some of these guys that sit on the committees get tired of listening to me, but get, don't get, you don't have to get a generator, but get hooked up so we can give you a generator.
Right, exactly.
You know? And they don't want to spend the money. And that's a serious issue. And we, you know, we can get generators, we can buy a few, we could have bought a whole bunch of them there for a while because the government was giving them away just about. But, you know, you got to store them and all that kind of stuff, so. It's not, it's doable, but it's not easy.
Your point is well taken. I mean, hooking up, I know on my property, I have my furnace hooked up that I can plug a generator in, it's no big deal, electrician can come in and do that quite quickly, so.
That's right.
It's something that members of the public watching should keep in mind, it's not a big issue to hook. If you've got any furnace, be it a boiler or a air furnace, all you need is that plug unit that'll allow the generator to hook in. And once you have heat, that's really all you need is heat. And usually, our problems are in the winter, so we don't usually have an issue with cold and losing food. My second point, your worship, and I've brought this up numerous times and we've never, I don't think we've played with this as much as we should have, and is why can't we get Harold and his EMO group to put together a card and put it in with the water bill? I know Counselor McIsaac has brought this up in the past, previous councils, but I mean, we reached 6,600 people in this town and municipality through our water utility on a regular basis. Why can't we put directions for City Watch or EMO directions, put the key necessary components in there? It maybe can be something as simple as a fridge magnet, you know what I mean? That can go in the thing that people can put there and they'd be able to see it in case of an emergency, this is what you should do. It's something I really think we should explore and just as a thought.
Well, do you want to make the motion? I think we talked about having like that bright piece of paper that people could just put up on the fridge. So, you want to make the motion, go ahead and it.
I'll make the motion. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, your worship, that staff be directed to work with EMO to develop a bit of an information, I think it was a magnet or sticker that could go into the next quarter mailing of the water utility bill that could help give our residents clearer direction in the event of an emergency.
Contact information, okay? It's moved and seconded, discussion, go ahead, Counselor Dawes, is it?
Thank you, your worship. This is the last one and I know we've already, we've already kept you longer than your 10 minutes.
It's fine with me, it's your 10 minutes.
But this question is very, very quick and it has to do with that.
Oh, okay.
It's a good idea, however.
Good.
And I will address this to both Harold and our CAO. I remember, don't ask me how far back though, somewhere we had received and still have somewhere in the house, a booklet, an emergency preparedness information booklet, which tells you, gives you just about all the information from A to Z and back again, information about batteries, telephone numbers, what you need, blankets, minimum this, what you should always have, have ready, water supply, et cetera. It's a very small booklet. Where did we get that from?
Me.
And how long ago?
Well, I remember, see, we've been through four, so it must be six years ago at least.
How often are those?
You know, because Charles Crosby was mayor at the time I did it, so that's how long ago it was.
It's been at least six.
So, it's got to be six years at least, if not seven or eight. Huh?
Walling was the local.
I can't hear you.
Walling, Strickland.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Walling was.
No, it's, yeah, it's all right.
But, we did mail those out to every household. I think we mailed out 9,000 of them at the time and.
I found it very useful and I've had it on our preach for the longest time.
And I still have a few of them left in the office, actually. So, I don't know how many I have left, but they're on my table.
Was it just a booklet, a booklet, a sticker?
It's a booklet.
Booklet, okay.
It's a little green booklet.
Okay.
When you go in the office, EMO, up front in the front table, there it is, there's one of them sitting there.
Okay. So, we got a motion on the floor, is there any more discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you very much, Harold.
Okay. Merry Christmas to y'all.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I bought a generator.
Acoustics branding. Yeah. So, can you, you can make sure that the cameras are pointed at that when you get back, when you're, yeah.
Thank you, your worship.
It seems like it's been a quick turnaround since you were here.
We aim to please. The dynamics of this meeting are slightly different than the last time and there is an audience, so I thought maybe for the benefit of the people watching and attending, we should just give a very quick background of what we're trying to accomplish. My name is Ian MacLeod, the company is Acoustics and a sister company is called Forum Media. Together, they're providing the consulting tonight. By way of background, in 2010, the town of Yarmouth commissioned Acoustics Planning and Design to build a blueprint for the revitalization of downtown. This document is here in the flesh and it's also reflected in the screen above. A very comprehensive document that covered off recommendations for physical improvements, policy improvement and administrative, all with the direction or mission of revitalizing the economic and social character of the town. So, the best way to describe this document is essentially a roadmap, if you will. If you were traveling into unknown territory, you take along a roadmap, that's essentially what this document is. It's essentially a guide. It's not something that has to be followed orthodox, rule by rule, but it's essentially a guide, a blueprint for the next 20 years on how the town may want to revitalize itself physically and in policy. And I'm here tonight to really discuss one aspect of that revitalization, which is the creation of an identity, if you will, a brand identity for the town. So, we had the pleasure of meeting a couple of weeks ago where I presented to several ideas, several brand identity ideas, and I'm just going to see if I can bring them up here for you. Okay, any time now. So, you'll see before you in the paper document as well as on screen, we can read along together. Two weeks ago, I had the pleasure of presenting four directions, four ideas, if you will, for consideration as brand identities. These were ideas based on consultation through discussions at workshop where some of the counselors and the mayor was present. And also, we did an online survey where we asked for the opinions of people in the area and their relatives to just weigh in on how they see their community. And essentially, a branded entity is building on the strengths of the community, so we're asking the community, what does it do best, what does it want to be known for, what is it most proud of, and what we are creating is a reflection of that. So, the ideas we're putting forward are part of that vision, if you will, of where the town wants to go over the next 10, 15, 20 years. So, we had a very spirited discussion. I presented these four concepts. I think there was a lot of very constructive debate over their various merits. And it became obvious fairly soon into the conversation that there was one idea that was sort of rising to the top. And if you wouldn't mind turning the page, that idea is Yarmouth, anchored in pride. And there were, there was discussion about a couple of things, most notably color and overall design. And I promised and I've delivered in the space of 14 days, I think, what is a reflection of that discussion. So, we have here tonight some choices for discussion and hopefully, it will cover off everyone's concerns expressed at that meeting. So, this, if I'm not mistaken, is the initial color that we had talked about at the first meeting. And we were asked to go back and see what else might be available for consideration. So, we've very quickly just brought out from the original 2010 document, a color that was quite popular then. And we're just putting it on the table for discussion, that's purely for discussion, but we're going to expand that discussion tonight and take it to other channels. If you wouldn't mind turning the page. Counselor, I think it was Langel, I can't be sure, was kind enough to suggest we look at Yarmouth 250, the color palette that was available then. I know a lot of time and trouble was invested in that exercise, so it only made sense to look at the color palette then and see if it could be applied to the designs we're considering as well. So, we were given the digital files and if you look on the next page, there are sort of the four primary colors that were incorporated into the 250 celebration. So, we take those four colors, turn the page, and we've incorporated them into a variety of combinations, if you will. There's a lot there to digest. It's pretty, it's pretty bright. There's a couple there, I think, probably in reflection, I might have dropped a few, but I thought it was important for you to see the variety. Again, there's at least one or two there that I think have a lot of merit, nice contrast between the foreground and the background. So, without, I know my time is limited here, so I'm going to just continue on. There is a selection of logo designs reflecting the palette from the Yarmouth 250 celebrations. For your further consideration, I'd like to bring forth the color palette that is being incorporated into the downtown facade improvement program. It only made sense, following our last meeting, to have a look at this. Running parallel to this process is a facade improvement program, which will, these would be considered the base colors for that program. And there are actually several more sub-colors, but these would be considered the, sort of the basic colors. Now, they, I'm looking at that screen up there and it's very interesting how the colors are interpreted based on the projector. So, it's very wise, yeah, it's remarkable, yeah. That is actually very common, it's a bit of a job hazard, very little we can do to control that, but I have taken the liberty of bringing swatches. So, there will be a set available so you'll know exactly what we're talking about and you won't have to make a decision based on what you're seeing on the screen. I think that screen is far more loyal to what we're trying to do than that one there.
But, it's still not.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, that's, that's a, yeah, well, that, yes, it would scare me. So, with those colors in mind, if you wouldn't mind turning the page, we then flowed those combinations into the design and right away, I think you're seeing some synergy there that would really be quite charming.
That yellow one is awesome.
I have a favorite, but I'll refrain from that, I'm sure there will be lively discussion on that, but that's, I think, a very good foray into something that will be very complimentary for the next 20 years with the downtown, yes, Counselor McIsaac?
Counselor McIsaac?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I have a favorite one too, out of the four. And I'm going to be, I'm going to tell you which one mine is, only because when you hold it up and you look at it from a distance, it's number one, it's this one here, that one there. When you, when you hold it up and you see, you're looking at it, you, this is bold, you can see that.
Yes, yes.
And you, the anchor, the anchor is not so much, it's kind of in a distance, but I like the Yarmouth and I like that. This, the color here.
Yep.
It's, it kind of, it fades into the dark color.
Right.
I like the color, but it doesn't coincide with the black for some reason, so.
Okay.
But, I do like that one because it's very bold and you can see it, so that's what makes it good.
Okay, thank you very much. So, if I'm not mistaken, that might be the, yes, that's the final slide, but it's obviously not the final discussion, but I think it's enough to start it. I think this probably reflects, if you will, the last time we met where we wanted to see a few more variations and have a little more discussion on the flexibility of this idea. And I'm very pleased to say, what I'm seeing here says to me an idea that's very flexible, that's very complimentary to what you're trying to do downtown, with the exception of that one up there, so.
With the exception of what one?
Those colors are absolutely unrecognizable to me, so.
Okay. Counselor Dennis, go ahead.
I just have a question. Why do we have a box around the anchor? Like, why don't we just have an anchor?
It's, you know, it's a design choice. I think just the anchor, and we have played with variations without color and we keep coming back to colors just being something that's a little more eye-catching, it just, by itself, it just looks a little too denuded. It feels like the color is required. We've wrestled without ourselves and we've, we feel that color is just something that adds a little bit of, it centers the idea, it just, you know, you're welcome to see it without color, but my recommendation is some color to center and focus the eye on the icon is essential.
Thank you.
Counselor Langel?
Following up with Counselor Dennis here.
Following up with Councillor Dennis here, I agree with you. My problem is visually, I go to the box, not to the anchor. In all of the different ones, my eye is drawn to the box first, and then to the anchor. And we were gesting here a minute ago, saying, I do hope we don't get the messes at Yarmouth Square, you know? Because I hope that's, we don't wanna do that. So I understand your concept with color, and I understand the need for color, and given this kind of logo, but almost you need to have a, you want the anchor. If you look at the one that Councillor Mackay-Zip commented on the first one in the upper left-hand corner, unfortunately, the anchor's lost totally in that because it's so dark. The one on the bottom, rape me, I would say the one directly below it, that's not so bad. But to me, color is more than color. There's gotta be a reason for the color. One of the big processes during the 250 is each of those colors represented an element in our culture, British, McMah, et cetera, et cetera. So that was part of that element. And I think our color has to have something reflective. I think it was Councillor Mackay-Zip kinda whispered a second ago, even something with waves or something, or something that kinda gave a pattern of sequence or something in there would be nice. But I have a problem, I personally, I love the anchor, I love the anchored in pride, and I love the Yarmouth, of course, but I'm really having an issue with the square. You know, even a rope curling around is, as Councillor Dennis just whispered here, yeah, anything, anyway, just as, this is a thought, because I'm afraid when I look at that, I go right to that square, and I don't go to the anchor. I know we're trying to get the, you know.
We gotta get it right. Go ahead, Councillor Dodd.
Thank you, Worship. I also, I thought with all of them, square, the square is taking away, visually, it's distracting. And I like the blue the best, and I also, I was playing around thinking, well, if we had a wave going either from left to right or from right to left over the anchor, the square, the square is very, very distracting.
Okay.
But, is this me?
Yeah, one of the things we have to take in mind.
And also, I'm, I, I, I ask myself, the anchored in pride, if that's in blue, just how, how recognizable is that if it's up on a, up on a?
Do it in black.
Flag.
Right. So let me try and address both issues. Again, we're still at the development stage, so this is part of the discussion. We're not saying these are final by any means. But one of the reasons for the color is, we have little way of anticipating how this will be used in the future, right? So is it possible this will go on a billboard? Will it go on a letterhead? Will it go on a flag? Will it go on a t-shirt? So just in those examples alone, you have upwards of five fairly distinct backgrounds that you have little to no control of. So if you took away the color, then you're exposing whatever's left to whatever's gonna be behind it, as opposed to being able to establish a stage or a platform for the design so that whatever comes next, at least you know consistently how this will look and feel. Once you take away the color, you're at prey for whatever background you're gonna put it on, which could be vastly different from what you're seeing right now. You're almost guaranteed to be vastly different. So this is an effort to try and get some kind of control and consistency in the look before it goes out into the wider world and gets used in any number of different applications. All to say that.
Do you have another question?
Yes, thank you. I think if we just stay consistent with basics, like a nice, nice ocean blue, black, that I think they, they would fit on, they could fit on, on any background.
Right.
I like this, but this maroon, I don't know what shade, what shade is this? It isn't maroon, it's not brown, what is it?
Right. Yeah, the palette here, if I'm not mistaken, is called Aqua Chintz.
It looks like it's got a, it looks like it also belongs a little into the, in the purple family.
Yes. And I'll, I'll be happy to leave these with you. And keep in mind, the, the whole intention behind this color choice was that you're going down a road where you're gonna see these colors reflected in the facades of the revitalization. So these are the, sort of the key colors. So we thought it would be a nice gesture to create something that will be seen to work in synergy and harmony with the facade improvement program. That's where the genesis of the idea lies. And I still think it has merit.
I, I loved the anchor, and I still like the anchor, but when you just said, when you go out into the wider world, and I'm gonna say this, this is gonna sound awful, but I, I mean, no disrespect to anybody, but Yarmouth Anchored in Pride, to me, just says, really? Is that going to encourage people to get excited about coming to our town? Absolute, I shouldn't say absolutely, I don't think so. On the other hand, the excitement when you say Yarmouth on the edge of everywhere, and it doesn't have to be that one, but I, and I know, because we've had this conversation.
Yes.
But I'm sitting here looking now, and, and I loved the anchor, but I just, I, it, I lost something. The excitement's gone, the, I'm proud, I love Yarmouth, the anchor fits it, but boy, you know what? If we're gonna do this, I think we do it right. And for me, and I could be one person out of six, it, it just washes us away in a sea of, of a million other brands that really don't say, wow.
Well, Worship, you're touching on something that's certainly near and dear to my heart. I'm, at the end of the day, I'm a supplier. I have to trust the judgment of my clients. But I, I think you probably got the, the spirit of my enthusiasm in the first go-round. I take your point, and I think what tonight was, trying to reflect a fairly short timeline consensus in the group. But if it's worth anything, I'm in your corner, and I certainly echo those sentiments as well. I think we're thinking 20 years down the road, where do we wanna be? And what do we wanna, what kind of anthem do we wanna say to our neighbors and friends and our children or grandchildren? And it's a wonderful statement to make. I may be saying too much, but.
No, no, you're not, because we need to, to, because I could sit back, I could sit back and say, you know what, everybody loves the anchor. But in good conscience, I can't, because I'm thinking of the rest of the world as well. And I'm thinking about, for me, the type of people that, that we're trying to draw here, that we have something exciting, and we need to be excited. We need to, I guess I'm looking for a brand that just for me, I look at it and I, it lifts me right off my seat and says, man, I gotta be there.
Well, to echo that, I, it's fair to say that the town will be taking some chances in the next few years to get things going. Why not have a, an identity that takes similar chances and makes such a bold statement as well? So.
Exactly.
I'm certainly in your corner.
Thank you. Might just be me and you in the corner.
That's okay.
Oh, no, I brought that. Somebody, okay, Councillor Langel, and then you, go ahead.
I hear, I hear the point, and I, I respect that. The problem we do have is that we kind of put the designer in a relatively tight timeframe. In fact, a horrendously tight timeframe. I do disagree, I mean, I'm looking at a lot of logos. A logo is a logo, and two, I don't get exactly wowed by the new Halifax logo. It doesn't, to change, merely just played with the letters. It didn't quite turn my crank, and I'm not exactly running up with joy to Halifax because of it, with all due respect to Halifax. A logo is not gonna bring a business to Yarmouth. I, I don't know of any corporate entity in the world who would look at a logo and tell us, holy mackerel, I'm gonna come and spend $20 million there and set up an industry. No. The logo, the logo, to me, the anchor shows stability, the anchor shows pride, but it also shows strength, et cetera. That's the message I get from it. And everybody, art is, art is art. I have a son who's an artist. You know, there's a lot of artists in my family, and art is interpreted by many people different ways. I can look at a design one way, you can look at a design the other way, Your Worship can look at another design another way. Everybody will interpret that design. Ergo, my comment on Halifax earlier, you know what I mean? Some people in Halifax think that's the absolutely best design the world has ever seen, whereas others will say the exact opposite. So in your, your work, Ian, you can't please everybody, that's gonna happen no matter what. My thought is that, given your timeframe, have you given any thought to incorporating the word Yarmouth into the anchor? In other words, making the anchor within either the anchor somewhat, playing with it in the word somehow. And to me, we have an anchor floating, we have a word floating, and then we have a slogan, a slogan floating. My thought, this is a thought, if you could somehow move that anchor into the word stylistically, you may get a very neat concept.
Yeah. I, I can assure you that I've got about a dozen renditions of this back in my office where those, those values and ideas have been certainly played with, and I'd be happy to share with, them with you. What might be at play here in the bigger picture is the issue of what we're saying, what we're trying to communicate over and above the anchor and, and anything to do with color. So I take responsibility for reflecting what I thought was the mood of the.
And you did.
Yes.
You did, oh, you absolutely did, yes.
But I, part of this process for me is knowing that sometimes your favorite ideas get left behind very quickly, and that's what happens. So I was, I'm glad it's back for discussion. And I've certainly come to understand this community in the short time I've had the pleasure of working with you. And what I put there for you, for this, for your consideration, was an idea on the edge of everywhere that I thought had massive potential to send a message to the wider world that you're a force to be reckoned with. It's changing a perception into something that's actually a great advantage to you. It's something to build on attracting business, attracting visitors, attracting residents. It says you've got a new mindset, and that your legacy to whoever sits in your seat in the future is to uphold that. That, to me, I think was a tribute to your organization, and I was very pleased to put it forward. Ultimately, at the end of the day, it's your decision, and I understand that. A committee is, it's a difficult thing to work within a committee to find consensus, so I, I respect the difficulty of that. But I think there is in the, in that idea that was considered earlier, something that has a lot of value and a lot of legs to take you to the next level, for what it's worth.
Go ahead.
Not to belabor this, but the logo that we're looking at now is basically the stabilizing logo. Like, as we looked at the other designs at our last meeting, Deputy Bear McLeod made reference to a design that he liked, we all made references to designs. For example, in the initial design, for example, more stars than Hollywood, that's the one with the star flying over the top. Great design, and I can see our Economic Development Office using that kind of a concept, you know what I mean, in a promotion or something like this, because some of this stuff is more advertorial, is more advertising-based versus the logo.
Absolutely.
Which is your anchor. I hate to say, I'm, I'm, I'm playing words there, I'm sorry, Worship, but, but it is. But some of this, these concepts are like, if, for example, that one would be perfect for, he used it as a development promotional piece or something along that line, that's where, something that would click in. Similarly, the one, a small-town, big heart, would be, again, a great promotional piece that would work within, whereas what we're working at is the logo itself, there they are there. Some of them, for example, a hub of hospitality, would be great for Yazda to play with, you know what I mean? But your, your main factor here is that center, that, that stability, that, that logo that's sitting there. Like, we've had that crest behind Her Worship's head, has been around since 1892, whatever it was, or 1890, I lost track of the year, but it's been around for a while. I mean, that's the town shield, the town crest, basically our logo as such. But we've done a lot of changes around that. We've moved around that for different promotions, we use the 250th, that sort of thing. So there's nothing stopping us from branching out, and I think what Her Worship was referring to was this idea of, we need that wow factor as well, but that wow factor can be done in individual campaigns, can be done in individual amounts, in some respects, rather than, and again, we can change this, you know, once we get the brand in place, and once you get the logo in place, everything kinda rolls from there. And I seeing that too, but we got this time restraint, we don't wanna rush, so it's a hard variable. So my long rendition, I'm sounding like some of my colleagues, what do you recommend we do next?
Oh, okay. I just wanted to, well, I, I'm sensitive to the fact that you've got a busy plate, you wanna make a decision.
Not the wrong decision, no, sir. This is, it does take time.
So let me, let me take you back to, let me take you back to the, the whole reason I do this. It's taken me a long time to be able to step outside myself and be critical of my ideas, and that, that is an art in itself, which I don't profess to have mastered. But your challenge as, as an organization is to step away from yourself and ask, what am I bequeathing to my town that is relevant, not only today, but 10, 15, 20 years from now, when hopefully, things are different? What statement do we want to make as a council and as a community that will make a difference? And there is a tendency among groups and communities to, when they're trying to find consensus, is to perhaps agree on something that perhaps doesn't take as many chances as it should. But I think Yarmouth is in a position to take a chance. And what I see in front of me is an idea that whatever comes next will make a statement for your community for many years to come. It will invite questions, it'll invite inquiries, it will inspire you to say and, and package yourself in ways you haven't considered before. So that's my legacy to you, that I'm trying to create something that goes beyond tonight, that in another 10 or 15 years, you can look forward and say, we were there for the birth of this idea, and look what it's doing for our community. So that's, that's worth second consideration, for sure. There's very safe ideas up there, and there are very daring ones, and I'm, my heart goes towards something that, that's daring, that's, that's saying something different, that's asking people to think differently about your community. And one of those ideas clearly does that.
Councillor Dennis.
Well, when we, when we discussed it last time, I had two favorites, Anchored in Pride and On the Edge of Everywhere. And the more that we go through it, I like the Anchored in Pride, but I think I like better On the Edge of Everywhere, because I think we can use that one a lot more. So it's hard, it's hard, because I know we all think differently, but I, the more I look at that one, I like it.
For, for me, it goes right to what you said about, maybe you didn't use these words, but I'm reading your words. You gotta have the guts to, to step out, and, and I, Councillor Dennis will remember, I was at the grand, and I said, it's the anchor. I was bent on that anchor, because I believe in it. I believe we are the anchor, I believe it stands for everything we are. And I look at it now, and I see, I see, and this is no reflection on you, you did exactly what we asked, okay? I, I see that it's still true, but it, we get lost in a million other brands. It's the same at Yarmouth, Hub of Hospitality. How many places are hubs? But we are. But you know what? On, on the edge of everywhere, that's, every time I turn around, somebody is saying to me, Yarmouth, you're at the end of the world. Well, guess what? You're right, we are. We're on the edge of absolutely everything, and if we don't stand up and, and take a stand and say, you know what, we're gonna celebrate what we are, and you need to come our way and see what we have, then we may as well just pack up our books and go home. And I feel that strongly about taking a stand and saying to the. and saying to the rest of the world, look at us. Because you know what? I don't think Yarmouth on the edge of everywhere is reinventing everything. It's saying, this is who we are, and this is how we do business. And right to the small-town big heart, we're on the edge of that too. Because nobody does hospitality like us, nobody conquers the giants like us. You know why? Because we're on the edge of everywhere. So that's my little spiel, and I never thought I'd feel this strongly about it. But I don't want to get this one wrong. I want us to stand out because of, not because of that comfortable, fuzzy who we are, but because we truly are great. And we are on the edge of just about everything we do. We come out on top because we've got the guts to make the tough decisions, and it's time the rest of the world found out about it. Thank you for listening. Don't know where that came from, but there it was.
You sold me.
It's time for Yarmouth to stop playing small. It's a big world, and we may be a small community, but we're mighty. We really are, and we need to... So what do you say there, counsel? We need to take some time and think about this? Counselor Langill?
Well, some of your comments are interesting. And I'm kind of looking back, I'm kind of thinking, okay. So I am in Tokyo, Japan, and I am doing a web search, and I am coming up, and I'm looking at this logo with a little star.
Might not be that.
And I mean, I'm looking at it, I'm trying to figure out, okay, what does that star represent? Is that, there are two men, I mean, logos have messages. And I've lived in Yarmouth, your worship, pretty well all my life. I know the history of this community extremely well. I've done tours, I know everything. And I'll be honest with you, I cannot understand, and maybe you can help me, because this is your logo, what does that star with those two little squiggles represent?
I have no idea, but here's what I'm saying. Just like the colors, he doesn't have to come back with a star, the two squigglies. He doesn't have to come back with that. It's what we're trying to say to the world. It's the on the edge of everywhere. So he goes back, and you know what? Chuck an anchor on it, I don't care, but we need to say something.
Okay, so you're hung up on the wording, on the edge of everywhere.
I'm hung up on the message.
Well, now, that's, now we're getting somewhere. So that's exactly. So I mean, the slogan, I agree with you, that's fine. My concern is, is you want a nice, succinct, clean logo for an identity. That's what you're looking at. Something that's going to have an eye-drawer, that's going to bring it in, as you said earlier, the wow factor. So I'll be honest with you, that logo on the bottom says absolutely nothing to me. I do like the wording, there's no question, on the edge of everywhere, that works. And I think if we did a play with that anchor, on the edge of everywhere, I think we would be on the right track. And I think that's what you need to do. Because I'm not, I mean, obviously, the anchor's anchoring something. So the anchors are a symbol, which, as you pointed out, as we all pretty well hear, is that is the symbol of our town, is the anchor or whatever. And that's there, but the slogan is great. So if you did a bit of an incorporation, a bit of a jiggle, I think we'd be going somewhere.
Want to do that for us?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, that's what I thought. And I agree, I agree, because the star, for me, wasn't, it's not, but it's the message we're trying to send. Okay, so are we, oh, sorry, deputy, go ahead. Please don't pick another one.
Actually, I really don't feel qualified in a way to choose. And I've enjoyed the discussion. What happens in about six to eight years' time and we have a unification and/or an amalgamation? What we choose today over the next several months, does that make any difference in the future, if we're together?
We're still on the edge of everywhere. Right. Good question, thank you. So are we in agreement that we're going to let this gentleman? And thank you so much. That's why you come back with all of it, we put it together, and we come out with something even stronger than this. So you do that and come back? Do the BMBs know you will?
I'd be very happy to. And just to reassure everyone, when these ideas were first put forward, they are working documents, so to speak. So you're really seeing the very early stages of ideas in their transformation. And when we came back this time with a new look and feel for this idea, I think we owe it to the idea, edge of everywhere, to spend some time to see where that goes as well. So we're very happy to do that, and we'll show you some variations.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I'm out of breath.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Very good at what you do. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Well, so far, so good. Business arising. Taxi bylaw amendments, second reading. Sorry, CAO, did you want to speak to that? Thank you very much, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. So these were the governance amendments that we had proposed and did first read at the last council meeting. It's been advertised, and so it would be appropriate at this time if anyone in the audience wished to come forward and address council on the amendments. And following that, once the public has been heard, a motion to approve second reading would be in order.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the taxi bylaw? Anyone care to speak to the taxi bylaw? Third call? Okay, so I have to, I have a question. I, when I was in Halifax last week, a lady approached me, and I have to find the email, I was going to send it to council, I just have to find it. She looks after the national standards for drivers, and she offered to come talk to us if we want that. I'm just, I'm just wondering how, what's the next step in this? Go ahead.
Okay, so we talked about changes within the taxi bylaw that got to dress codes and so on. And the decision of council a few months ago was to remove all of those amendments, to just make the governance changes so that we could reestablish the taxi advisory committee, and then leave it up to that committee to come forward with recommendations on sort of the operational matters at a later date when it suited them. So that kind of a question, I think, really should go to the advisory committee for consideration once it's formed.
Excellent, thank you. So what's the next step on this one? Okay, moved. Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Motion re-heritage incentives program.
Thank you, worship. This, I gave notice and motion at the last council meeting that I'd be bringing this forth. This is a project of the Heritage Advisory Committee. We've been working on this for a couple of years. And this has been circulated to council. There was an updated version, and unfortunately, I was away, but one of our committee members did spot an error, that the wrong one was on site, and apologized for that. The, there was a couple of minor changes that was done by the committee on it. The idea of this program, and this would be probably referred to budget, but the motion tonight I'm making is that we approve the program as submitted by the Heritage Committee pending budget consideration. So my motion would be that the town of Yarmouth approve the heritage incentives program pending budget consideration. So we're not strapping council to something we'll discuss. If we can do it this year, we can do it, and if we don't, we don't. So that'd be my motion, if there's a second, or then I'll go into it. The difficulty, worship, is, is some communities are doing this. This is a grant program. This will be for heritage property owners who would be able to apply to the town of Yarmouth to a maximum of $2,000 for eligible exterior conservation work to their properties. There was a lot of discussion on this. We want to encourage property, heritage property owners, especially in the town, to continue to keep their homes up to standard. The problem we're running into, we're seeing in this community, as we all know, we are an aging community. And some people find it very difficult, don't have the financial resources to actually fix up their homes. So it's kind of like an extension of what we did in the downtown facade program. We have numerous municipally-registered properties in the town now. Many of the property owners are able to afford to look after their properties and do an absolutely incredible job. But there are some that financially may be a little tight for them. So as a result, the plan was, was to incorporate a program that people could apply to the Heritage Committee for financial assistance every year to a maximum of $2,000. And this would be in matching dollars, of course. The idea is that they would be spending considerably more on their own property. If you look at the applications, we're looking at fiscal year as usual. We'll do five a year, maximum of two, 10,000 total. We have put in there what the applications will include, and then the eligibility, which is very important. It must be non-governmental, it must be non-income-generated residential property. And there was a lot of discussion within the committee, and Counselor Mooney sits on that committee with me, so he may want to comment as well. There was a lot of discussion on this, but it's felt that businesses, especially Bed and Breakfast, do have the ability to write off their exterior repairs. They can write it off as their income tax, whereas a private property owner does not have that ability to write it off as an income tax adjustment. So this is a way that can assist them. The eligibility column, we went through that in great detail, what's available, and if this program goes ahead, will help for deteriorated windows and doors, cladding, roofing, foundation, replacement of exterior features, et cetera. And then we do mention ineligible working materials, and those are just, those go in line with our present bylaw with regard to municipally heritage buildings. So those are things that you can't do to your building without getting a necessary development agreement or getting permission from the heritage officer. Priority is given there, and then the review process and the whole thing that's involved. That basically is what the project is and the whole step. So I know council's had a chance to look at it, but I guess why I gave a notice to it. I do hope we'll look at this. And again, I will caution, it does have a codicil there that is pending budget. So it's just something that, if it should be passed tonight, then I will make a second motion to refer it to budget. So that's the process, so that staff will know it'll be a referral to budget. And if we can do it, we can do it, if we can't, we can't.
Thank you. Counselor Dennis?
Thank you, your worship. I just have a question on this. Because most of us on council have, a lot of us on council have heritage homes. So is there something in there to say that council members or immediate family having heritage homes can't apply for this?
I believe that would be covered under the MGA, and the solicitor can, it would naturally be assumed right off the bat that none of us, anybody who has heritage, because I have a heritage home, I know you have a heritage home. And the reality is, is that, no, while you're sitting on council, naturally, you wouldn't be able to apply for that, and that'd be under the MGA. And any family relations would be in the same boat, so you wouldn't be able to participate in that. That's, I think, and I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure I'm correct on that. That was discussed at the committee, and the committee felt, well, rather than putting it in, it just automatically, you would notice that, because there would be a huge blatant conflict of interest if somebody applied.
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to ask the question so that the public would know that we can't submit.
No, we're not submitting.
Great, thank you.
Good, thank you. Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, worship, my question's for the solicitor. So I just heard the council to say that family members wouldn't be permitted to apply for the grant, living in that household? Oh, I missed that part. Okay, that's great, thank you. Yep, thank you.
So there's a motion on the floor. Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Therefore, thank you, worship, and thank you, council, for your support. My second motion is that we recommend to budget an expenditure of $10,000 for the heritage incentive program for 2015 fiscal year.
My second.
Moved and seconded, Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I missed, I'm going to take advantage of it right now, I missed earlier. I thought my light was on. So I was going to say, I think this is a great idea, I will support it. This also spawns, I think, a marvelous and a wonderful and very much needed opportunity for not just registered heritage homes that belong to not-so-young anymore people in town who also are very proud of their homes. And at one point or another, we will, or some of us already do, are finding it difficult to keep them up financially. And I believe that this would be, not this, this program in itself per se, but I believe that there is room for an opportunity for elderly residents in older homes to actually help finance help for themselves in the future. And if you will allow me to make a notion of motion? Motion, notice of motion, thank you. I will present that either at the next council meeting or the one following.
So we'll vote on this one first?
Yes.
And then you can certainly...
I think to, also to respond to Counselor Dawes, one of the reasons for the heritage incentive program, and again, I invite Counselor Mooney if you want to chime in on this one, is to bring up a very nasty memory, was Zion Baptist Church. This was a result of that whole discussion. Part of the problem, if you remember, with Zion and the aftermath with Zion Baptist, is that a lot of heritage property owners are frustrated that there's no direct benefit to being a heritage property owner. You have a lot of restrictions placed upon you, not as many as you think. People have this idea that you're restricted. And the idea of the Heritage Advisory Committee, your worship, is to encourage people to register their homes. That's our whole goal. And we thought that if there is a plumb out there, people say, oh, wow, if I register my home, we can get, I can get some financial incentives. And I will also, I cannot stress enough that there is $200,000 available for municipally and provincial registered properties through the, to the Nova Scotia Government. It's a huge pot of change that you can apply to, and those grants are up to $10,000 a year. So to become a registered building, suddenly now, a few years ago, all you can get back is your HST. And I think Counselor Dawes's comment's dead on the money, because up until recently, there have been no incentives for heritage property owners. You haven't, you had restrictions on your property. It was designed so that you, your property would be protected and safe, and somebody isn't going to put a big apartment building next to you. But the reality is for you as an individual, and you're facing a $25,000 painting bill or a $30,000 roof, this is a small little incentive, just like what we saw in town with our facade program. It gives that little initiative that maybe people would say, you know, to a lot of people, especially, as you said, Counselor Dawes, senior citizens, 2,000 is a lot of change here. You know, it's a lot of change, and that is, that would help, you know, to them in many cases. So that's the whole intent of this, your worship. So we're hoping it'll build, and we're also hoping that we might get some more corporate involvement and things like that as well. So that's our whole goal.
Good, you're late on.
Oh, is it? Oh, all right, well, then I'll take advantage of it, just for a moment. So just to make one small point clear in my motion, in the notice of motion, this will not be, this will not cover any new bungalows. This is, this is actually specifically targeted towards maintaining and keeping up heritage, not heritage homes, but historical homes. Yours, yes, mine, no.
So we need to vote on this one, and then you do your notice of motion?
Yes.
Okay? All right, so questions been called? All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. And Counselor Dawes?
Oh, you're going to make me repeat all that?
No, I'm just, I just want to get the motion, I just want to get it clear, unless Linda has it.
Do you have it?
No, no, because it wasn't, it wasn't defined. We just want to know exactly what you would like to do.
All right, everybody jump in here. A notice of motion. I had it, I had it. Anyone can jump in and help. Well, Counselor Langill knows exactly where, and you agreed, so you can help me out with this. Yes, you do. To encourage the conservation of, or no, to encourage the...
Are you thinking of going to non-heritage programs?
Are you thinking of going to non-heritage?
Non-heritage, that, yes, yes, that's what I said earlier. They're non-heritage properties. They are historical. They're old. They're older homes.
They have to be brought into, I mean, under this program?
No, 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 has nothing to do with yours.
Were you into the program?
Yes, a whole new program. Where actually those...
Can you help?
Seniors, well, can you help if you would? It would be much appreciated.
I think what the council, I think the line of thought she's going through is something similar to, and I know you had, Your Worship, over the past couple of weeks, Minister, the Housing Minister, Joanne Bernard. And you identified a program that has $200,000 in it for heritage homes. I think what council's looking for is, I know there's other programs through the provincial and federal governments that give money to seniors, people with low income, people that are disabled. Maybe something that we can encompass them all. Because we had this discussion with one of the realtors a few months ago, Your Worship, about an incentive program for houses in certain areas of town, right? And I think under this new town's task force, this is one of the things that they're leaning towards, is incentives and laddering of taxation rates. So I think probably this may be something, maybe, I don't know if she wants to do it tonight, but something that we can get our development officer in, because there's lots of money out there. And he just identified one program that has $200,000. And I think you said at the Heritage Advisory Committee, Counselor Langella, that they didn't, you have full access, didn't use all the money last year, right? So I know that, you know, with our elderly population here, I know there's people, we have older homes in all portions of town. You know, a few thousand dollars is going to go a long ways, on a roof, on a door, on fixtures, on redoing windows and everything else. It has to be done. But we'll see what the notice of motion is. And I think maybe at the start of the year with our development officer, people from housing, you see what we have for programs, get our builders, our developers in here, people that own residential, real estate, not only residential, but apartments, and get them all together and show them how they can access these programs and what money is available.
I thank you very much. I thank all my colleagues. What I am, what I will do is, I will make that, I will make that, bring that notice of motion properly at the next council meeting in January. How's that? I'm very sorry. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
But this incentive, it just brought this to light, and I thought, oh, wouldn't this be a great opportunity to, for everyone in town, non-heritage, non-registered heritage homeowners?
Yeah, and as Counselor Mooney was saying, the talk I had with the minister, there were so many programs out there that, like you said, people aren't completely tapping into them. So maybe there's something within that before, I'll just help you look into it before.
Economic Development Officer can...
Good.
Get your GPS on that. Thank you.
And just further to what Counselor Dawes was saying, I think the problem is not really, it's not really our role as a municipal council or a town council to, at municipal level, to promote these programs. We create and we promote our programs. That's our role. Our minister, our member, MLA Zach, really, there should be a dialogue with him. A concern has been addressed tonight. There should be a dialogue with Zach to say, okay, could you get us a list of what is readily available? Find out what these programs are, and then just figure out a way to get that information to the public. I mean, it would absolutely shock you. As Counselor Mooney was saying, there are some incredible programs out there. The problem is the people don't know how to access them. And if I had a dollar for every time I've heard, this was under budget, that was under budget, this was under budget, because people just don't apply because they don't know. The same thing with the Heritage Advisory, our provincial heritage...
Our low-income assistance with taxation rebates is not fully accessed over the last six years.
Yeah, yeah, we budget, as Counselor Mooney just said, I know his mic wasn't on, but I mean, here you have a budget, I think, CAO, $25,000 or $20,000? How much, $30,000 now? $30,000 for tax assistance for low-income families in the Towne Yarmouth, and then we don't use it. People just don't apply to it because they don't know it's there. So it's another one of those famous communication flyers that we'd love to throw into a water bill sometime. You know what I mean? These are programs that are available, did you know? Or something. We almost need a do you know page on our website. Here's how you find CityWatch, and here's some programs that are available, you know? And if people knew that and had access to it with the web link, holy mackerel, that would really help a lot of people. So, point is well taken.
Good.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, years ago, and I forget how many years ago it was, I don't think it was that long ago, but they had a program, it was called, New Start was the organization that implemented the funding. I think it was either provincial or federal.
New Start?
New Start, yeah. And it was a program, and if I'm not mistaken, I know somebody will call me or whatever, but it, I think Four Corners had the doings of it. They had an organization out there where they hired carpenters, they hired electrician plumbers and what have you. And it was, that's why it was called New Start. They had a lot of tradespeople, and they would take calls from seniors that needed fixing up of their homes and stuff like that. It could have been, put in a new window, put in a new door, or whatever, whatever. And there was a cost-sharing factor in this, that the provincial or the federal government had it. And it ran for, it ran for a few years, actually. And Yarmouth was one of the beneficiaries of it, that a lot of seniors and a lot of people on low-income and fixed incomes that used this. So it's something maybe that needs to be, or maybe it's still out there under a different name. So if there's fundings out there, it's something we should be really going after. So New Start was the name of the program for the Towne Yarmouth.
Thank you.
Who's dating themselves now?
Counselor Dawes?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I didn't mean that. I didn't mean that, I didn't. I've been busy here. I've been, I almost have my motion semi-formulated here while everyone's been speaking. And I'm actually, I'm pleased. I'm pleased that my well-intentioned blunder has spawned so much, so much discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Do we vote?
Yeah, it's already done.
Okay. Thank you. Good. We are at staff review process. Counselor Langella?
I was puzzled to see this on the agenda. We did this at the last meeting. There was a motion that staff be asked to investigate it, and we passed it. I'm wondering why it was on the agenda.
Okay.
It was an instruction to staff to investigate it. And it was going to be to staff, and we're going to report back to committee from committee in the hall. So it's in the minutes as approved.
Good. Okay, snow clearing removal tender results, 2014-15 season. CAO?
Thank you, Your Worship. There's a memo attached from the town engineer. Tenders for, excuse me, for snow clearing, ice control, and snow removal for six parking lots within the downtown area for the 2014-15 winter season was advertised in the provincial procurement website, the Vanguard and the town website. Two responses were received from local contractors. One of the two responses was withdrawing after being submitted, after being submitted due to an error. After reviewing the tender pricing, equipment availability, and references, it is recommended that the contract be awarded to the lowest tenderer, Kay Anthony Landscaping and Snow Removal, as per the above pricing. That's for your consideration.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Grants meeting date. CAO?
Your Worship, last year we did the grants meeting in January, I believe, late January. And what that allowed us to do was go through the process and have the decisions made before April 1st of last year. And I think that was very helpful to the nonprofit organizations. So if we could set, if it's our intention to do a Saturday and hear presentations from the applicants, if we could set that for a Saturday sometime in late January, that would be great.
Sorry, go ahead.
How does the 24th sound, Your Worship, for people? That's a Saturday, the 24th. If we did it the 24th with a storm date to 31st? So if we did it the 24th, storm date 31st, because one year we did have terrible weather. Oh, I can't do the 24th. 31st.
When are you coming back? You gone for a bit? Okay, I'm gone that following week. Debbie's going to miss you. Oh, my goodness. I'll be gone the first week of February. Do it then. The deputy can... Yeah.
24. 24.
January? All right.
Yeah, it's a Saturday. That's a Saturday. That's good. I was just teasing you. Good, so in the meantime, we get, what do we do to get information out to tell people? Because we don't, go ahead, CAO. That wasn't rhetorical.
It's in the paper. We are taking applications currently. The deadline, Linda, is...
On December?
December.
Okay.
December 19th. So people have a little more than, a little more than a week to get their applications in. And then what Linda will do is schedule all of the presentations. It's usually a full day. We allow about five minutes for presentations, and then five minutes for question and answer with council.
Okay, so by the 19th of December, all of the grants to organizations' applications need to be in here.
And I know last year, Your Worship, I don't think we played too hard and fast with the 19th rule. I know we had some that came in after the first year that didn't realize our deadline. But I know Linda always does her best with the scheduling and getting people, getting the information out to people, so...
But after the 24th of January?
It's going to be pretty tough, yeah. And people still try to do that, but...
Yeah, yeah. Good. Thank you. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Worship. Are we also going to, again this year, are we also going to ask, everyone is, everyone's going to be submitting their financials as well and also letting us know where and how much they will be requesting grants to other bodies, other government offices and et cetera?
Do we ask? Go ahead, CAO.
Financial, sorry, financial statements are part of the grant process that are supposed to be submitted with every application. And it should be clear within their financial statements or budget for this coming year where they're applying. It isn't always clear. We can do a follow-up with those that are not clear about where they've applied. Or if you like, we can do a specific request of everybody to ask if they've applied to other municipalities or municipal-level organizations for funding.
Or any other government level.
Sure.
All right, now, do you need a special, do you need special direction for that? Or can we just say, yes, please? All right. Because I think that should be clear. That should be made clear to everyone.
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment, Your Worship. We seem to have the same ones year after year that do not apply. And I know Linda, God love her, contacts them accordingly. And I really think we've had this discussion before, especially the ones that are applying for tax consideration, the taxation. And we can't, I think we have to stress that as hard as we can, that they have to apply and not to come running in in May or June expecting something to happen. Because it's always been a huge discussion. So that's just my little sidebar.
It's all, they always know, right? It's not like they're unaware. Okay, yeah. Yeah, okay.
And they keep coming back?
So we have decided on January 24th. Did you need to?
No, I have another issue.
Okay. Do we vote on that? Yeah, we're going to vote on it because, only because it puts it on the book so that she gets the list of what to do.
I have a second.
All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. It's just so, it's on the book. Don't you just wish it were back in the day and you could sit down and just have a conversation, make some decisions, go do it?
I love, I love the counselor's, Deputy Mayor's comment, especially since he's the chair of the municipal planning. Anyway, there's rules and regulations. Your Worship, if I can digress here, I was talking with Linda, and that's why she missed it. I made an error. I thought the motion was passed, but it wasn't. We tabled that motion on staff review. That's why it's on the agenda, because there was some discussion. We were getting pretty tired at the end of that meeting and cranky. So I guess that's now off the table. So we got to bring it off the table for discussion. So my apologies to that. That's why CAO was absolutely right with his infinite wisdom in putting it there. So, Your Worship, I'm going to bring it up again, and the motion is exactly as presented, which would be, I move that staff be directed to explore and report to council at a future date various options available to us to exploring a strategic staffing plan and review of all departments and agencies within the Towne of Yarmouth, and to provide us with a background information on efficiencies and inefficiencies, and give us guidance towards a long-term strategic plan.
Did you second that?
I did.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called? Oh, sorry. Deputy, go ahead.
With respect, Ken and Danny, I intend to vote against the motion. I'm not against the body of the motion, but we have so much on the go now, number one. And Jeff is just reaching a point in his life with a new planning department and other activity that to ask him to organize and do this will simply take up time, which is money, and money, which is at a premium, as we all know. Also, when I read the motion and thought about it a little bit, the study could come back and say that we need more staff. And I think Jeff, at this point, organizes. And every time there's a staff change, whether it's someone who has been let go, or someone who is ill, or someone who is off or any other reason, he looks hard at what is happening within his organization. And I think makes really good suggestions and changes. And I can recall in my working lifetime as a pharmacist-owner that there were a number of changes. And every time there was a change, I thought about where we'd come from, what we're doing today, and what we could do tomorrow. So I'm not going to vote for the motion. Thank you, Your Worship, and fellow counselors.
Thank you, Worship. And I hear you, Deputy Mayor, your concern. This is seen as a positive thing. There's no question, our CAO and staff are pushed to the limit. My intent with this motion is, and I think it's, it shouldn't take the CAO longer than half an hour and maybe at the most, to see what other units are doing. Our sister in the municipality district of Yarmouth is doing a similar situation, not as extensive as this. But I see this as an RFP, basically is what you're looking at. We're going to bring in new fresh eyes to look at the organizational structure. Our CAO has been pretty restricted by us for two reasons. Number one, we don't have an appetite for tax increase. So as a result, he has to jiggle the books somehow. And oftentimes, that jiggling is through staffing. When somebody retires, they're not replaced. How far are the elastic bands stretching? Could we be putting more elastics in other areas? Could we, should we have some staff changes here? Do we need, and that's where these fresh eyes from an outside agency coming in would look at the structure we have and say, okay, this is some things that we can do. To me, I see it as a very positive thing with outside people coming. And yeah, they may say, Deputy Mayor, yeah, you're going to need two more people in your finance department. And maybe, you know, you may need this, and you may need that, or you've got too many here. But I really think we need that outside review to come in and say, okay, what's involved? And it's an RFP. I mean, we, you know, CAO can come back and say, well, gee, to do this is going to cost $250,000. Well, guess what? Ain't going to happen, because we don't have the appetite for that. On the other hand, if he comes back and he says, this is what I think, I think that's the important. I think we all appreciate, the CAO and his staff are very pushed. But it's not the intention for him to spend a lot of time on this as an individual, simply to see what... simply to see what his sister colleagues are doing, what the colleagues in the other areas are doing, and then say, "Okay, this is what we have. These are your options, council. You know, Windsor's done this. Kentville's done that. Crower's done this." And then we will look at it and say, "Okay, we can do it, or we can't do it." So it's just to get gathering of information. And maybe the CAO may wanna comment, you know, on this, and what he feels, you know, on it. But I see it as a positive step that will give us something. I also think we need that long-term vision. Like, where are we going? We're gonna see some huge changings in our staffing here. We've got some retirements coming up of key players, especially in some of our key positions that are changing. We've seen changes already. We have a new planner. We have a new fire chief. So now is the chance that we have to maybe address some of this change and come in with some positive changes that would help bolster our town and make ourselves more efficient, and also to give the services which our residents want. So I see it as a positive information gathering tool.
Go, Counselor Dawes?
If the CAO wishes to speak to it first, that's fine. I'll wait.
Go ahead. No, it's okay.
My comments will probably be more around the actual work of doing the plan versus just gathering the information. And that is that if you wanna review your staffing plan and create a strategic or a long-term strategic plan for staffing, I think you first need a long-term strategic plan for the town so that you can then match your staffing appropriately to that. And we don't have that. So my thought would be, first steps first. Let's do a long-term strategic plan for the town, and then let's go the next step.
No, we suggested it.
No, that wasn't approved by council. We've never done a long-term strategic plan.
Never been that.
So that's my comment about that. As far as gathering information on what other municipalities are doing, you know, that... Again, I could do that through an email and bring you back some information. But my comment in terms of value, if you want to really know if you have the organization aligned with your long-term vision and goals, is to articulate your long-term vision and goals first.
So, in making the motion, my thought is, let the motion go. Let the CAO look at it and come back as a recommendation saying, "This is what..." After he talks to his colleagues. It's on the books. CAO comes back, "These are the steps I recommend you should follow, X, Y, and Z." Come back as a recommendation in what the parameters would be. That's why this motion's got so much generality in it. It's not specific. It's got a lot of generality, which gives the CAO and staff a lot of flexibility on how they wanna frame this. And then they can come back to us, and then we'll look at the end result. So I don't see it as a long-time commitment. I think it's something that we sorely need, a strategic plan. We don't have it, you know. Sorry, we've been talking this for two years.
Well, we asked.
Yeah.
Within the first six months. I think I said three times, but it just gets turned down. So either we bite the bullet, or, you know...
Yeah. But we should be looking at where we wanna go. You know what I mean? And what's the long-term vision that we have. And that is gonna be so important, because that identifies your infrastructure, that identifies your staffing, that identifies all your key elements. So you need to look at that, and then whatever. But I think the CAO would have that opportunity to come back and do exactly... And recommend to us exactly what steps he thinks should be taken.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, worship.
Oh, Counselor McIsaac, sorry. His button went on first. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I'm a little bit puzzled there, of course. I can be puzzled at times. It's a staff review process. The staff... That staff be directed to explore and report to council at a future date various options available to us to explore, developing a strategic staffing plan and review of all departments and agency within the town of Yarmouth to provide us with a background information on efficiencies and inefficiencies, and give us a guide towards a long-term strategic plan. Now, I listened to what the CEO said, but to have a plan, first of all, where we're going and what we wanna do as a town... I've sat on a few of them. They're informational. They're good. They have a five-year plan, ten-year plan. Nobody follows them. But that's just... I've sat on them. You can make all the faces you want, your worship. I sat there and done it. I sat there and done it. And his... Mayor Mooney sat there and done it. But anyway, if that's what the councils wish, that's fine. But to put... To say that you want... My understanding is you think, Jeff, that we should perhaps have a strategic plan first before we go through to have somebody come in and look at the inefficiencies, deficiencies, and the structure of the office and the employees and everybody themselves before you do a strategic plan? You think that's a worthwhile exercise? Well, you must think it, because you said it. It's a good exercise. I differ with that myself. And I'm not a person of your experience. I just think it's a putting the cart before the horse. For me, for me, that is. But whatever the council wishes.
So, a strategic plan says, "This is where we are. This is where we wanna be." The vision, the whole picture of where we wanna take the community. And you can't... You can't... You have to set the plan before you can say, "And this is what we need to carry out that plan." This is the staffing we need. These are the different strengths that we need in people. This is how you pull it together. I don't think the town's ever done a strategic plan. Because when we said it at the beginning of our term, it kept coming back, and the answer was always, "We just wanna do priorities. We just wanna do priorities." Well, you can do priorities all we want, and they're great. Unless you got a plan... I think we can check the tapes on this. I think I said a half a dozen times. If you haven't got a plan, where are you going? You're not going anywhere. So we're moving, but we're just not moving... We're not moving at the pace we could if we sat down, said, "This is where we wanna go." And then we take a look at the staffing and move forward that way. You have to know what staffing you need to carry through on the plan. That's just my thought. But... And I do strategic plans all over Canada. So, go, Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Strategic planning, yes. That was one of my first questions when we first came on council. And we did broach the subject a couple of few times. Timing, timing is never right for anything. But both strategic planning and reviews, they're both good corporate practice. Timing is never right. You're never gonna have the right time to do anything perfectly. I will support this, this motion. I will. Whether it's done immediately or in six months from now, doesn't matter. Just simply because I am used to doing business that way. It is good corporate practice. But we also have to get our act together. And we've gotta sit down, and we've gotta agree on our strategic plan. Whether we like the name or whether we wanna give it another name again or not, but we really do have to do that. We're already into year three. Where are we taking our citizens and our town?
Thank you, worship. Thank you, worship. Just to respond to Counselor McIsaac, and I can understand his frustration. However, we got three things happening here, as you pointed out, your worship. Number one, we have had priority sessions where we sat around and we said, "What do we see as a priority?" That is not a strategic plan. We also have had goal-setting, where we brought in experts, and they've come in, "What do you wanna do?" We did the warm and fuzzy goal things, same thing. That's not a strategic plan. The problem we have, and I'm gonna put it as base as I can, we've been flying by the seat of our rear for too long. I mean, that's the reality of what's going on. I mean, we have staff that are brought in when we need staff to identify something that we see as a priority. "Okay, my god, we're gonna do this, so therefore we have to hire somebody for this." And... Or, "We gotta have to do that, so we're gonna have to hire somebody for that." So what's been happening? And staff take direction from the council. They're stuck with us, you know, unfortunately, for four years. Or fortunately, depending on how you wanna look at it. And they have to follow our direction. And they have to jiggle the books. They have to do this, all this. But there's no long-term plan as to, "Okay, where are we going?" And we haven't really sat out. And I actually see an RFP process coming out of this. I don't expect see staff doing it. I expect to have... There's some really good firms out there who would get involved, who would help the town out in that. And then once you've identified... As you just said, your worship, once you have identified what your long-term, five-year, or even ten-year plan is, then you look at existing staff and say, "Okay, how do they fit within this plan? Maybe we need to make a change here. Maybe we need to take a change there." That's all this will do. Now, this may be cost prohibitive for us. I don't know. But I've had, and I think all of us around this room have had, people come up to us during our term, this term and previous terms, frustrated because they feel that things just aren't going the way they want them to go. And I think if the community sees what the long-term goal is and what we have in mind, then maybe we'll start working in that general direction. Because we have so many groups... And when this was brought up in the past, your worship, we've had so many groups all going in different directions. They're all trying to do the same thing, but they're all going in different directions. You know, we have, you know, one agency doing this, which is for the bedroom of the town, another agency doing something similar for the bedroom in the town. We don't really have this long-term vision. We just hired an economic development officer. Have we ever given... I haven't seen a single document that gives direction to the economic development officer from this council. Like, what is the vision for the economic development officer? What do we wanna do? What's her priority gonna be? Is it gonna be tourism? Are we gonna encourage industry? Are we gonna... What's the direction? So here you have somebody who's hired, sitting in an office, doing the best job she possibly can, but with no direction from council. You know what I mean? This is the frustration. You know, really, we haven't... I haven't said... Sir?
Yes.
We have?
No, no. He needs to respond to that.
Yeah.
That's not...
Okay.
Yeah.
There have been a number of projects that I've assigned to Natalie to work on. And one of the projects is to come back with a plan. Okay, so she's working on that plan, a work plan that will come to committee of the whole. So it's not a case that you have to be economic development experts to tell her exactly what to do. It's that she's working with the people in the field, putting together a plan that she'll bring back to council and recommend to you. So we're not hiring someone else outside to do it, and we're not expecting you to be experts in that area yourself. But you will receive a plan that she will execute.
So the input in that plan, council will not be involved with the input in that plan?
She reports to committee of the whole every month on what her activities are. And I think there's opportunity at those meetings, as well as in between those meetings, to discuss any issue you want around economic development. But she is going to develop the document herself. But it's not gonna be done in isolation with the door closed.
To follow up to that. So, again, we do not agree, CAO, that a strategic plan would be useful for the economic development officer?
A strategic plan would be useful for all of your staff.
Okay. Wait a sec. I just... Let me say something. Of course, a strategic plan is good for all the staff, which is why, at the beginning of the mandate, we pushed for a strategic plan. But as I recall, and we can check the tapes, it was too early in the mandate. It was, "We need to set our..." There was always an excuse not to have a strategic plan. Now, we're in our third year, and all of a sudden, everybody wants to get on board with a strategic plan. So we need a plan before we say, "This is the staff we need." And when it comes to... You made a good point. The citizens should know where we're going. If they're out there shaking their heads saying, "What in the heck's going on?", it's no wonder. Because they need to know where we're going so that every question, just like the priorities that we set, when we make a decision based on whether we're going to purchase a property or what we're gonna do with a property, the question should go to one of our priorities, which is, "Does it increase the tax base?", for example. So that, in a strategic plan, everything you do brings you back to the point where you say, "Is this going to get us closer to where we are going?" As far as the economic development officer, the engineer's office, and every other engine that works under the town of Yarmouth, what I... Unless it was misinterpreted, what I distinctly said a number of times was, "Every one of these entities needs to be aligned said a number of times was, every one of these entities needs to be aligned in the same direct, I remember putting my head, the hands over my head and saying, "And we're going this way, and everyone's focused in the same direction."
Like a Christmas tree. That's what you said.
I did say, like a Christmas tree.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas, we know where we're going.
Yeah.
So, so, yes, strategic plan first, staffing second. But, anyway, what, councillor McCausick, you're on.
Thank you, your worship. Now, when I, when I said, "I, I know that this council has not had any strategic plans", no. We've had some, some sessions where we sat and talked about priorities and stuff, which is, which is great, which is fair. And that tells you where you're going. That, that was good for me. We did have a session, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff, at the, for the last council, at the Grand, where we had strategic planning. You had, what was that called? What?
Priority setting.
Priority setting, okay. But I know, before your time, Jeff, when you was the recreation director in the municipality, and Ray Galant was sitting where you're sitting, we had strategic planning way back then. That's what I meant by, there, you, you can make all the plans you want, which was great. And we did, we had a lot of good plans, but the majority of them, we had 10 of them, I think there were, I think nine of them are still on the shelf, so, and that's all I'm getting. So we spent forty, fifty thousand dollars to spend an afternoon over there writing on charts. It was all fine, good intentions, but it didn't go anywhere. And we got a lot of, a lot of planning and a lot of, a lot of works that sit on the shelf in the back room here. And I'm not saying that this strategic plan, if we have it, will, but I, I, I look at it, I'm looking at it a little different. Maybe I, I should have looked at the wording a little better before I, before I even said, "I agree with this", because there's some things now, I'll, I, I'm going to vote yes on it, but I'd like to have seen it written a little different, but that's...
Okay. Councillor Langel, is there something new?
Yes, there is, your worship. Just to respond to your comment that you brought this on board two years ago, and you did, and I was against it. And there was a reason for that. I don't think it was a wise move to have three novice members of council embark upon a strategic plan without having the experience of council under their belt. We are now in our second year of mandate, and all of us have got a lot more experience because you're developing a future direction. It would be a process, and you're a facilitator, you're a professional facilitator, and I've done many of these sessions as well, that if you're involved with people who are not, shall we say, so much involved with the actual workings of the town and the direction of the town, it would, it would kind of be, be a, a bit of a slanted development. By waiting, as we have, we're now entering, it's perfect. Everybody's had two years. I mean, we're no longer a new council, none of us are novices. We all know things, we've seen our infrastructure, we've seen our, we know our concerns, we know what our community wants, we, we've gone through some difficult times, we've, we've, we're moving in the right direction. When you look at where this council was when we were first elected, and what we ended up with, we did, we were coming into a period with, "Yeah, we have a ferry coming, maybe", we, there were some things in the horizon that were looking good from the previous council, which was a wonderful thing. But right now, we're at a point that, that last council was doing nothing but running. You know, it was running, it was running. We were constantly running, because we were doing this, this, and this, and this. But again, that was just to try to get things moving for our community. This council now has got a blessing of experience, we've got an excellent council, I'm thrilled to be on this council, who I think now can work with that experience in a very positive direction. So I think, when you make the comment, your worship, you know, three years in, you know, why are we on board? Because I think we're now to the point that we can go on board with this. And I think that process would be good, and I think that's why supporting this motion would be a way to do it. I mean, we, we can't change the past, but we can influence the future.
Okay. We good? Moved and seconded? Any further discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, motion carried?
How about, again, was that two nays?
Two nays, deputy and I.
Your worship?
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. May I just make a suggestion? Could we, we have, we have guests in, in the audience, and they've been so patient for the last two, more than two hours. Could we make an exception and jump to 10B, 10BA? Citizen advisory, committee of planning advisory?
Absolutely.
Could we do that? And then we can always go back.
Great citizens who are so excited to be here the entire evening. So sorry.
This has been great.
We were... You've figured out where to tap into money, you've figured out a lot of things.
May, may you want to run for office next time? No, we're not getting it.
We'll work on them. Deputy, are you okay to go there right now?
Yes, I am, your worship.
Okay.
Motions from the committee of the whole, November 27, 2014. That's where we are?
No. We're going to go to planning advisory, if you don't mind.
Missed you on that. I was just going to the top of my, I'm...
Yeah, I was there, too. That's the sheet I had, but we'll go just to the planning advisory, if you're okay with that.
I'm okay.
Okay, go ahead, deputy.
These are recommendations to our council from the PAC meeting of November the 18th. I move that we proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the MPS and the LUB to permit institutional users to make facilities available for use not permitted in the zone in which it is located for a community. Commercial or light industrial use, provided that use is not obnoxious and does not generate concerns with respect to traffic or parking as outlined in Caroline's report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Just, just help me out here. Which one of these are we dealing with? I'm a little lost, I was away. Are we doing signage for inaccessible buildings in health campus zone, or are we just going dump, which one was that one?
I have November, the, the, it says at the top, November 18th, the November 18th meeting.
But which one is it? We've got planning advisory committee, we've got a number of, we've got six things I'm looking at on the screen. Which one is the one that Deputy Mayor just read?
Oh, sorry, the first one.
That's signage for accessible buildings, okay. Just want to make sure I'm on the same page. Because that didn't sound like signage for accessible buildings.
Yours, yeah.
Is it make facilities available for startup and, startup facilities?
Do you, can you show him what you have there?
So is the facilities for startup for small businesses? So why don't, okay, so, good, okay.
Yours are on a, yours must be in order.
No, no, I'm just trying, I'm just following the schedule and the agenda.
I should, too.
Just following the schedule and the agenda.
Oh, councillor, they just weren't in the same order in addition, I think, maybe.
Back to the agenda.
Yeah.
The agenda, so. If you click the first one there, it was Deputy Mayor's name. That's got recommendations.
Ah, good. Okay, good. So the order was different?
Yeah, that's what she said.
Okay, good. Okay, now I'm sort of...
Sorry about that, councillor. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Any discussion?
Who seconded the motion?
Long as it wasn't councillor Dawes.
It was, I think.
Okay, who seconded that motion?
Somebody else.
Okay, we got a couple of seconders. Pick one, Linda. Okay, any more discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to allow for signage and accessory buildings in the health campus zone using approach number two, as outlined in Caroline's report.
Moved and seconded.
Questions?
Discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
The third item, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to permit parking of commercial cargo trailers in residential areas using option number one, as outlined in Caroline King's report.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Can I just ask a question on that?
Certainly.
I, I, I know we're just going to hearing, but just for my own peace of mind, now, how does that affect with signage? Is the signage bylaw being addressed by the PAC on that as well? Because many of these cargo trailers have advertising on them, and there is a signage issue. So is that encompassed in this? Because I didn't read that encompass, because we have the signage bylaw that restricts on the amount of signs that you can have, so suddenly, how does that work?
Jeff?
The trailer isn't, isn't a sign, the trailer's a trailer, and it would have, it would have corporate markings on it, so that's part of the commercial aspect of it. You could have a, a non-commercial trailer already in your, on your property. This, this allows it for commercial purposes, and the, I guess the implication is, is that it would have, it would have advertised, likely indicating the company name.
Good. Okay. Deputy?
From the PAC committee meeting of December 2, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to expand the downtown commercial C1 zone south to include 225, 211, and 193 Main Street, from residential R1 and R2 to downtown commercial C1, as outlined in Caroline's report.
Second.
I'm, I'm, huh? Yeah, I'm just going to go.
Come on, so, is that great, mister? One more. Seconded.
Oh, that's great. That can go in.
Go ahead, Ken.
Just a question on this one. Just a question. We're going south on that. How does that work with north on the same, are we looking at any need for expansion in the north? I mean, I know this facade program was in there, and I understood there were some properties north there. Is that a necessity as well, or is, should they be incorporated in this?
I guess the fishery's okay.
So, I guess, as chair of the moment of this committee, any more questions? Call for a question on the motion.
Questions?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Okay.
So, number two, to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to rezone 2 and 6 Herbert Street, from low-density residential R1 to open space O1, as outlined in Caroline's report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Contrary? Motion carried.
Last, number three, to proceed, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to rezone 451 and 459 Main Street, from institutional I1 to downtown commercial C1, as outlined in the planners' report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, deputy.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you for your patience. So, we are going to go, did you notice, they're staying? This is a good thing. Yeah, maybe they don't dare to leave. Okay. So we're going to go back up to 9C, multi-purpose tractor tender, CAO, did you want to, B? Oh, we didn't do B, I crossed it out. Request for decision, number of councillors. CAO?
Thank you, worship. I'll introduce this one. This has to do with the requirement of every municipal council in Nova Scotia, every, every eight years, you're required to make application to the utility and review board to either confirm or to change the number of councillors that, that sit on the, on the town council. So this year, all municipalities are required by December 31st to make an application, and it can be to either confirm or to change the number of councillors. Service Nova Scotia this year sent out some information and suggested that a study would be appropriate of some sort, and they gave some parameters on the types of things that could be included in study. And involve things like the number of, of citizens that each councillor represents to ensure balance and parity and so on. That stuff is really more relevant in, in municipalities where, where there's a ward system. And in the town of Yarmouth, there is no ward system, everyone is elected at large, and so there's an argument to be made that every councillor represents the same number of, of citizens, and that is everybody. However, and, and you can imagine in the municipality, if you were changing the number of councillors, and you were trying to keep a balance of, of the representation, then boundaries change, and there's some, you know, there'd be some, some discussion and perhaps different opinions on where those boundaries should be. In our case, we, we simply looked at the number of, of citizens and the number of councillors. We asked independently Stan Jones to do some analysis. He prepared a three-page brief for us, using what little data is available. That was subject of a public participation meeting last week, which we had, which was very poorly attended. The crux of his analysis is that there are, there are 30 towns in the province of Nova Scotia, approximately half of them have six councillors, and approximately half of them have four councillors. This is in addition to the mayor. We are the fifth-largest town by population in the province of Nova Scotia, so our, you know, we, our number that we currently have sort of fits more neatly in the distribution of councils that have, that have six councillors. So because of the statistical outcome, Stan, Stan said, you know, that the numbers more or less suggest that, that the current size is appropriate in the context of other towns. So there was also a, a suggestion in, from Service Nova Scotia, that we seek online input. And so over the last week and a half, we've sought online input, both through Twitter and Facebook, and we have had a grand total of 80 responses to the question of how many councillors do you think there should be on town council? Now, I can pretty much assure you that none of the 80 respondents read the three-page brief even, but were simply, you know, stating an opinion. As it turns out, and it was in the request for decision, the, the split is, is basically even, or, no, well, it's a little off even, slightly more people responding than they would prefer to see four persons elected to council and, and a mayor, and that was true of both polls, both the one on Twitter and on Facebook. And so it is, it is up to council in terms of what the application is that, that we apply to the utility and review board for, whether it be four or six councillors. But it is important that, that tonight, you give direction to staff to make that application. What will happen after the application is filed is the utility and review board will, will acknowledge it's been received, and sometime in the new year, they will schedule a, a hearing in, probably right here in our chambers, and citizens will be invited to come in and, and if they wish, make representations to the board. I can tell you, eight years ago, I attended that hearing, I was the only person who attended. And so that wasn't very well-attended. Hopefully, this time, we would have more, more engagement from, from the community on this issue, because I think it's, it's rather important. So looking for direction from council on the application.
Councillor Langel?
Thank you, your worship. This is always a, an interesting exercise. And I'm off the old ad, he said, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." I did read Mr. Jones's report, needed a very good job. I think with six sitting councillors, it works. If you get to four, many of us are quite busy on committees, et cetera, et cetera, so, excuse me, cold's coming back. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept the report, and that we confirm the number of council seats offered for 2016 to be maintained, and six council seats and a mayor all elected at large.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I have a couple of questions. Numbers of committees, everyone knows that that's my, my favorite little beef. With our numbers of committees, they've been going up, would they be going down? I'm just assuming now. We have, if, if the trend, if the trend does continue to go down, and our pop, our population number decreases in the future, which I don't believe it will, would our committee, our numbers of committees that we are either required, asked to, or choose to sit on, would they be reduced? And that's only one of about three questions, CAO, and I'm going to keep them, keep them short for you.
CAO?
So the number of committees that you have is, is a matter of policy and discretion of council. So we, we have established a committee of the whole a few years ago, which eliminated some, some committees. We've had, you know, we've reinstated a, a technology committee, or are in the process of reinstating a technology committee. It's been suggested we reinstate a fire policy committee. So, you know, there, it is really at coun, it's at council's discretion how many advisory committees we have. You can, you can roll more into committee of the whole, or you can do less. It really is, is your choice how you govern the town. So we have now several boards that are inter-municipal corporation boards, such as Waste Check, Waste Park, Industrial Commission, and so on. Because of those partnerships, we've created different boards for, for each of those mandates, and that is under review. So we may, we may consolidate some of those in the future to create fewer, fewer boards, but that would be by joint decision of the three, of the three units. I don't know if that helps you or not. I don't see much of a trend, really, to be honest. I don't see a lot of change one way or the other. The committee of the whole, I thought, was a good, was a good decision of council at the time that was made.
When was that, by the way?
That was about, I believe that was six, six years ago.
Six years ago? All right, thank you.
Yeah, we had, at that, prior to that, we had a public works committee, a finance committee, and it was the same people sitting around the same table, but we were creating separate agendas. And you never had a meeting where you had all staff present, or all directors present. So the committee of the whole changed that.
Now, my second question to you is, again, back to, back to the reports, doom and gloom of our population number, our population numbers are, are expected to decrease in the future. We vote in four councillors and a mayor. In year two of four, all of a sudden, we have a population explosion. Now, any change does have to go through the UARB, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we start out with a, with a smaller population number. We have four, we, let's say we vote to, we vote in favor of only four councillors, and we experience population explosion in year one and a half, or two, and it is just too, too Herculean a task for just four, let's say?
Yeah.
Four councillors. Can that, at what point can that number be increased? Does it then have to be represented, does it have to be presented to the UARB?
It would need to be presented to the UARB for, for consideration. The Act requires every eight years that a, an application be made. I think if you had a population explosion and, and you had a serious change in, in your community, you could, and you could justify making the application, then I suspect you could do it in, in between.
And how long would that take? Would you suspect?
Well, how long would it take? This application we're going to make this month, I expect a hearing, and they're doing 54 municipalities, right, this year. So I'm going to suspect they're going to start scheduling hearings within, within a month or two, you know, early in the new year, because they've got to do 54 within the one calendar year, so that everybody's set up for getting their municipal election organized early the year after.
All right. No, I'm fine. I, I obviously didn't structure my question properly, I'll ask you again later. I'm asking what the, how long, how, what the process would be and how long it would take if, let's say, we, we vote for four councillors, and all of a sudden, we find a great need, no, four isn't enough, then, obviously, naturally, we have to, we would have to go back to the UARB, bigger presentation, and how long would that then take? Before we could say, "Okay, fine, we..."
Go ahead.
So if you, if you decided that you wanted to go to four...
Yes.
And...
Halfway through.
You make the application, the UARB, let's say, accepts it, the next municipal election in 2016, there would be four council seats, and the mayor offered for election October 2, 2016.
And by that... And by the year 2018, we find, oh, whoa.
We're having difficulty.
Yes.
Right? It's not enough people around the table. And so the council would have to make an application to the UARB. I'm assuming they would entertain it. Even though it isn't required, I'm assuming they would entertain it. They would at least respond to it. There may be a requirement of some indication broader than just council itself. I'm speculating, I don't know. But I would say this, is that I don't think the UARB would allow you or the Act would allow you to hold a by-election to fill those seats prior to the 2020 municipal election.
It would then have to.
You'd have to ride out one term.
Ride it out, yes. That's what I suspected. But you could put in the application prior.
I expect so.
Okay, thank you. Didn't mean to draw it out.
No, that's.
Got your answer, though.
Just to comment on councillor Dawes's comment. I mean, one of the luxuries of council is that we can decide as individual councillors how much time we have for committees, what committees we want to go on to. Some of us have very hectic schedules, others, because of personal lives, work, et cetera, don't. I mean, it's the nature of the beast. I made the motion, and simply because six is working, it has worked. It's traditionally always worked since this town started in 1890. We did abandon the ward system. And I do know that we had one citizen that did write that we should have a ward system. But I can remember, as councillor MacLeod can remember too, the old ward system. The problem with the ward system is that you had gaps where people in particular areas of town were not offering. And often, you did not get the talent base that you need for good councillors around the table. So that's why we headed at large, and it worked fairly well. And now, as it works at large, we get a large number of people offering for council. I think it was, what, twelve or fourteen the last round? Yeah, twelve people. And you do get a nice mix, and it is based in central and south and north. So the balance is there. But I mean, we as councillors decide how much we're going to do and how much we're not going to do. I mean, that's something, we're not regulated to go to every committee meeting. Deputy Mayor sits on the PAC, which is a big job. I mean, that's a huge job to look at. We have streamlined a lot of our committees. The committee of the whole was great, and that's saved a lot of time. And as CAO said, there will be some change. But I think the recommendation of Mr. Jones is a good one. I think we should go with the six, and it's working.
Councillor Mackay?
Thank you, your worship. Just for the councillors' information and councillors, the new councillors, you don't have to sit on any committees if you don't want to. Under the MGA, you only have to attend two meetings. And that's regular council meeting, committee of the whole. All the other committee meetings, if you don't want to sit on them, don't sit on them. We had a councillor that done that. She chose not to sit on any committees, and she just extended two council meetings, and that was it. That was fine. So you don't have to sit on any if you don't want to sit on any of them. That's any councillor sitting around the table.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. But just to clarify, that wasn't my question. My question was answered by the CAO. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so two or four, so I'm going to throw a loop in. I'm just going to, because I thought about it. I thought about it. And I thought, you know what? Four, if we considered that, first, we had the data, and I read it, and I went to the presentation. And Mr. Jones did an outstanding job, given the questions that he had to answer. I think they were the wrong questions. Because we've got data that says with six councillors, that would put Yarmouth in the middle of the distribution of population per councillors for towns with that many councillors. I'm not convinced in the least that that matters. Because if the proportion of councillors to population were important, I think HRM would have about 622 people sitting on their council, and they'd do just fine. So I also understand that if we have to measure apples to apples, which is towns to towns, even so, it's not, for me, it's not, this is just my perspective, but it's not data that's pertinent to the question. If the UARB asks for the data, for that data, then I think they should have asked. I just think they should have asked for other questions. They should have asked other questions. So instead of asking, how many people are represented by each councillor? Which I don't think, maybe there's two or three councillors here that get hundreds of phone calls. Maybe some don't get any. So I don't think it's, in perspective, I think it's just the wrong question. I think the question maybe should be, would the same level of service be provided if we went from six to four? And there should be a measure of how that works. Second, even if we do take places like HRM out of the equation because the population versus the councillors doesn't work. And I have to, because this was part of what you were saying, the population explosion, it just would have no bearing. What was our population, what's the highest our population was? Do you know? Go ahead.
In 1961, the population in town Yarmouth was 8,636.
That's as high as it ever went?
That's the highest it's ever been.
That's the year I was born.
There you go.
That's the year I was born. So it was. I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was much higher before two. But anyway. The, if you go, we did go to the website and the social media polls. And while the response wasn't high, it favored four. And I know we can't, it's difficult to use the information for a number of reasons. First of all, because there weren't a lot of respondents. Certainly not as many as we would like to have had. And probably a lot of the people that voted, or a great number of them, weren't even town voters. I think you had mentioned that too, what you called about that councillor Mooney. But I think they still shop here, eat here. Not that that counts, but I gave it a little bit of credence. And I guess I got thinking, it was stated that the size of the town council determines the number of people available to carry the work of elected council. And then I got thinking, you know what? Maybe we need to take a look at everything we do sit on. And I didn't know about that, that council and committee of the whole. So thanks for that councillor. But take a look at what we're sitting on and see what the committees are. And do we have to be, does there have to be three councillors on some committees? Or even two on some? And do we take a look at, and maybe we need to do that anyway. Take a long look at what we're sitting on and what we're doing and go forward that way. I'm just glad that the UARB is going to be here to listen in the new year. And, you know, maybe some people are going to come out and say six, some are going to say four. I'm not stuck either way. But I had to put myself in the position where I said, would four work? I think it would work. And that's just my opinion. Your light's on.
Yep, thank you. And I respect that opinion, your worship. However, I do disagree with you on the number. Number one, to cut your council by a third would also remove the depth of your council. And depth is very important. You've got to have a different skill sets, and that's why the six does work. You have a nice skill set. That would simply mean that for a motion with a council of four, that three would do it. And how many times around this table have we had very close votes? Not really, for the most part, not a lot. In fact, most cases, and I've often heard people comment to me, we pretty well are on the same page on most of the stuff we're doing. Very rarely, I don't think you've had to cast a tie vote yet, you know, really, in reality. That's the depth. I would submit to you that that wouldn't happen with four. I would submit that that would be a different, whole different machine that wouldn't work. Because the idea of depth is important, the depth in age, the depth in experience. When you look around this place, we have business people, we have retired people, we have consultants. We have a really good skill set here, and it is working. The other concern you've got to keep in mind, that we are in essence volunteers. And councillor Mackay is right, a councillor does not have to sit on any committee. I mean, it's their choice if they want to sit in committees. There is a reason why we have numbers on those committees. And the reason is, is when matters come before council, you have the depth again to come to council. PAC is a prime example. You've got, I think, three councillors sitting on the PAC at minimum. So when issues come up, those councillors have the depth to explain to the other councils. Whereas if you go one member of council sitting on a committee, you don't get that depth. Tonight, when I was talking about the heritage, the whole heritage advisory program that were brought in tonight, I kept referring to councillor Mooney because he sits on the committee. Similarity with communities in Bloom. Councillor Dennis, councillor Mooney's sitting on that committee. Councillor Dawes, myself, are on police advisory committee. These, you know, you have two eyes, two sets of eyes. To me, I think it's scary to have one set of eyes on that committee. You need two eyes. Because therefore, there's always that second person to either back you up or to correct you if you're making a mistake. And I think that's so important. So, and it's good to have that. So I really would feel that if we went to four, as you're suggesting, the workload would be horrendous.
Why didn't you suggest that?
Because, well, no, what I'm saying, but my point is, the workload would be horrendous for some people around the room, because you'd be pretty well going to a lot of meetings. And now, we have different skill sets on different committees. And frankly, I think it's working absolutely terrific.
Nope.
Plus, the other thing is, your worship, when we sit on committees like Yarmouth Recreation or Heritage or Community in Bloom, we have more than one councillor from the town of Yarmouth on leisure services. We have two on, two or three on Heritage, the same thing on Communities in Bloom. But if you took two councillors off of that, and maybe one of those meetings, a councillor missed the meeting, us around this table know the fiscal responsibilities and what the town's budget holds. So here we are, oh, we got, jeez, Communities in Bloom, jeez, that comes up, great idea. The guys around the table, when the councillor was away, became a great idea. You know something? We got $400,000 worth of projects to do. Man, oh, man, they go all tour for a month. They said, pass it in, they give us $400,000 worth of projects. There it is. Same thing happens at Heritage. There's a balance in there, right? And a lot of the times when we're at, especially Communities in Bloom or Heritage, we explain what the parameters are, what we can and cannot do as a council, right? Especially when it comes to fiscal responsibility and fiscal responsibility. That's things that we can do. And when you're dealing with community members, there's things that, oh, I thought you could do that. No, we can't do that. And you know that better than anybody else sitting on PAC, that there's a process, right? Thirty, sixty, ninety days. There's a process and a second way to look at it. I know councillor MacLeod, since he's been elected this last time, is on the mantra that there's going to be an amalgamation. But I think before we do an amalgamation, we have to look at the committee structure. I think if we do it six now, I know, I don't think there's going to be an amalgamated municipal and town council. This election, I think, is going to be maybe in twenty, four years after that. We have a lot of work to do within, right? And the things that we're doing with the CAO, with going forth, with staffing and all the other things, it's a whole gamut of things. But I think six works right now. Digby went to four, but there's, even with the four and the mayor, they're still only representing about 500 people each. Here, we're about 1,100. And if you go and you talk to places like City Halifax, they have staff. You know, they have, not only do they have staff, each councillor has an executive assistant. They also have a staff within City Hall itself. And quite a large staff just to deal with councillor issues. They also have, as you see, who was it? Brad Johns bought the $25,000 Christmas tree. They each have $100,000 budget. They can give community organizations in their district. You know, we're talking, and those guys are paid close to eight. They're paid almost as much or the same as in MLA to do that, right? So I think the cheapest component, and I know people don't want to hear this, but the cheapest component and the ears closest to the ground are sitting around the table. And you know, for what we get paid and for what we provide, people think, oh, well, you guys go to two meetings a month. And you know better than that. Now, your worship, councillor Dennis and councillor Dawes, now that you're sitting around the table, this couple of hours that we spend here around this table is actually only one fiftieth what we do in a month, right? In committee of the whole. People say, you go to one meeting a month, go to committee of the whole, we see you on thing, and you think that's it. But that's not it. We do more than that and provide more services than that. And I wish, you know, this was the only time that we had to do any council services. But I think I was on Monday this week with Waste Check. I was from nine o'clock in the morning until basically five in the afternoon. And I'm one of the lucky ones, because like you said, with my structured family life, I can do that. So I think staying with six, and we have to look with our other municipal unit. There's ways to streamline it. And I think the first step is looking at our committee structure again.
So not that we're going to vote. I'm just going to say this. I listened to all the arguments for six. Not one of them really had anything to do with the questions that the UARB asked. That's my problem. They should be saying, how much is a town doing? How much is it growing? How busy is it? How, and we're busy, and I get that. But they're not focused on that. And maybe they are. Maybe I'm just misinterpreting the questions that they asked, right?
And every municipal unit's different, too.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, question's been called. All those in favor.
Aye.
Of the six. Yeah, all those. All those in favor.
Aye.
Contrary. See, you got me. I said I had to, I had to put it out there. Okay, good. Yep, we're going to finish this in five. Twenty after ten. Ten minutes, we'll be out of here. Oh, sorry.
We have in camera too, by the way.
Okay. Multi-purpose tractor tender, CAO.
Your worship, we have a memo from the town engineer. So tenders were called and supply of a compact, all-wheel-drive, multi-purpose tractor. Tenders were advertised on the provincial procurement site and on town website. Four responses were received for equipment suppliers, with the results summarized below. And after reviewing the tenders and manufacturer's specifications, the compact articulating tractor from Van Oostrem Farm Equipment is the lowest-priced unit capable of performing the work. The lowest tender price is $30,254 plus HST for the compact tractor, including plow and snow blower. There are numerous attachments that fit this compact tractor to enable it to be used year-round in the parks, such as rotary mowers, augers, loaders, et cetera. This is for your consideration. And just as a reminder, this is in response to council's desire to have Water Street sidewalks plowed or the snow cleared on Water Street sidewalk throughout the winter months. So these units that were specified had to be narrow. So there was a specification required, a maximum width, and he was successful in receiving a number of bids. That's his recommendation.
Councillor Dennis? Oh, sorry. No, we should have a motion, please. Okay. Moved in second, councillor Dennis?
That was my question about the width of it. So it's narrower than the blower that we already have? Okay. And it's going to fit around the trees and everything that are down on Water Street?
Yeah, so the machines that we have now, I believe they're as much as six inches wider than this machine. So this would give an extra six inches of clearance. I mean, you can get our machine through now, but you have to spot it through it. Is that tight?
Okay.
With an extra three inches on the other side, the engineer is confident that we can do the job. And he's made a recommendation to you here to be able to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I just have one quick question, and I know the CAO can answer this quickly, too. This lowest, this lowest bid, the Van Oostrem farm. The engineer, town engineer wrote, there are numerous attachments that fit this compact tractor to enable it to be used year-round in the parks, such as rotary mowers, augers, loaders, et cetera. Does that mean that they come with the trailer? Or these would be, we'd have to buy those à la carte individually?
CAO?
Those are available, but not included in the price.
All right, how much are those? And how much?
I wouldn't know. I think what he's probably referring to is a, typically, when you receive tenders on this kind of stuff, what you get is a flyer of the equipment. And those flyers typically show a number of different attachments.
All right, so if we had any of these attachments already existing, we wouldn't be able to add them? We wouldn't be able to attach them?
I asked that question, if they were, if you could put generic attachments on it or if they were sort of specific to the equipment. And the engineer's opinion on that was that we should go with the attachments that are specifically built for the piece of equipment. Although, he didn't say categorically you couldn't attach something else to it. But they would be front-mounted attachments and given this.
It's a Nova Scotian company, so I'll support that. It's just if a. Well, it's a Nova Scotia company, so I'll support that. It's just if rotary motors, augers, loaders, et cetera, pardon me, if we had to buy those extra, and if they came up to, let's say, more than $70,000 or $80,000, then I would question. I would question buying the lowest bid. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dennis?
Yeah, it's supposed to be just coming with the snow blower, but there's like a tractor part and a lawn mower and other parts that you can get separately. Because I went online, there's actually on YouTube, there's actually a phillom on there that shows all the different attachments you can get.
Good, okay. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision, small wind turbine project. CAO?
Thank you, Worship. So this is a request for decision to support the municipality district of Yarmouth's application to the Build Canada Fund, and it would be for a small wind project that would be a joint project of the three municipalities in Yarmouth County. I did attach a confidential document that showed the, some details from the proponent, proposed company, as well as I did attach confidentially a copy of the municipality's draft applications for your information. So in essence, if the application were successful, the three municipalities would all benefit from it. And so on that basis alone, I think it warrants our support. So I'm asking for a resolution in support of that application, that we can provide to the municipality, that they can submit with their application.
Second. Moved in seconded. Discussion. Councillor Langel, your answer.
Wow, really glad to see this. This is something that was started, I guess, almost four years ago, three, four years ago, and that's an excellent thing. So congratulations to staff for getting this thing moving. That's good.
Councillor Mackay-Zip?
Thank you, Your Worship. Jeff, I looked at it. I was glad to see this. And councillor Langel just said it. It's been about four years, as you just commented on. You're comfortable with all the facts and figures. You're confident that our sister municipalities have done their homework on these specific ones that are going up. Their credibility. What happens if there's a breakdown? How long do we have to wait before it goes on? Do you know, and can you find out, probably at our next meeting, if there's a shutdown for whatever reason, doesn't generate anything for two or three months, that's a loss, I would presume. And I say that because there was councillors talking at the UNSM about that they had windmills, and one of theirs were down. I think it was in Bridgewater, Lunenburg, or one of those places that have it. And it was just a chipboard that was gone, gone for two months. And they lost revenue, because they didn't generate any revenue selling the power to Nova Scotia Lightning Power. And they couldn't determine whose problem it really was to get this fixed or whatever. So I guess, are all those questions that I'm asking, have they been looked at or even thought of? Or, and if they're not, should we have a quick session on this sometime, maybe at our Committee of the Hall? I'm all for this, but I just want to make sure that we do our homework and ask the right questions. That's all. I'm glad that this is going through.
Go ahead, CAO.
I'm quite certain, based on the information that I've seen, that the company, that the proponent company that would supply the turbine here is not a new company. They're well-established. Many, many of these installations around the world. And it's my understanding, but we can have a presentation to council. I think that's a good idea for you to understand more, you know, more about what the project would be. I think it's very exciting. I think it's a very low-risk project. The payback, if the BCF application, Build Canada Fund application was successful, you're looking at a payback of about two years with a 20-year life expectancy. So you stand to generate 10 times your money through the life of it, which is amazing. If you're thinking about what's the size or scale of this wind project, if you've been to St. Ange University, they have two of the same-sized turbines installed behind the university. Not the big one that you see from the highway, but the small ones at the university property itself. And anyway, it's a great opportunity with the Comfit program. And you're right, if you do have a mechanical or electrical breakdown, it's a lost opportunity for revenue. Because if you're offline, of course, the blades aren't spinning, you're not making money. But, you know, we're going to be optimistic, I guess, that we'll have a minimal breakdown. There is something built into the budget and calculated in terms of payback that allows for maintenance, because nothing is, nothing mechanical is completely maintenance-free.
On the Canada Fund, how does that affect us from going forward with our projects that we want to go? Is this, the Canada Fund and all the other infrastructure projects, is that still part of the Canada Fund that we'd be asking for infrastructure work? So this would be part of the money that we would use instead of using for roads, water, sewer, whatever?
It's all out of the Small Communities Fund portion of the Build Canada Fund. This is the municipality of Yarmouth's application, and we would be simply providing support to that application. I'm not suggesting that we don't still submit our wastewater project, as we previously discussed. So that project will also be submitted. Now, there are going to be, my understanding is, over the 10 years of the Build Canada Fund, there are going to be three rounds of funding.
Okay, that's right.
But there are 10 years.
I think it's $14 billion, isn't it, or something like that?
Yeah, but it's Small Communities Fund in Nova Scotia is going to amount to about $80 million.
$80 million.
Eighty, eight-zero.
Eight-eight-zero.
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years, yeah.
And so, over those 10 years, it isn't going to be the same amount every year. I know that.
Yeah.
And I also know that there are three rounds. And so there may be some announcements in the spring with this, as part of the first round. There may be some announcements the following spring, because as annual budgets are allocated, new money is available, new programs approved, so...
This is a great project, and, you know, we should accept it and go with it. But I just don't want to throw back the work that we want to do also. But this is a win-win for the town of Yarmouth. So, anyway, that's all the questions I have. Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Jeff.
Because our name is, it is the municipality.
Pardon me.
Just trying to figure out who's next. Go ahead, councillor Dennis?
I just have a question for the CAO. Do we have any restrictions or bylaws in place for someone who would like to have a small wind turbine in their yard?
Yes, there are restrictions within the town of Yarmouth on wind turbines in our land use bylaw.
Okay. So yes, no, we can or can't?
I don't, off the top of my head, I can't say categorically that you cannot have any wind turbine whatsoever in the town. But it may be that it's limited to a very small size.
Thank you.
See, even in the municipality of Yarmouth, where this would likely be located, I mean, they have pretty strict setbacks and requirements in their land use bylaw. But because properties tend to be much bigger in rural municipalities, and homes further apart, so on, it's much more likely that you can cite a small project like this and have virtually no effect on neighbors at all. Where the same-sized project in the town of Yarmouth, you'd be able to see it for blocks. And so it would be within daily view of dozens, maybe hundreds of people.
Good. Okay, so a couple of things. There's a motion on the floor. Are we good?
Good.
Okay, question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. I'm on that committee. But do you want to ask them, or Linda, if they want to come present? I mean, I don't mind doing that, but, okay, good. Thank you. Okay, next. Green Energy Committee proposal. That's it, AB. Okay, reports. Council Advisory Committees, Committee of the Hall, Deputy Mayor. Would you mind, yeah, so we can hear you. Thank you, deputy.
Motions from November 27, 2014, Committee of the Hall. I move that a committee be formed to review received proposals for the preparation of a work program to complete a review and update of the town's municipal planning.